Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on the nose. Let's go ahead and get started. This is the Duncanville City Council meeting of Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And for six o'clock, we are getting underway with our work session and briefing session. Appreciate everybody being here and being functional. And thank you for staff attending as well. And helping us get through the business matters that we have before us tonight. Glad to say that this will be our second meeting in person. So it'll be interesting to see how many individuals from the city are able to come or wish to come. So we'll carry that forward. So with that, I called it to order at six o'clock. We will then move on on our agenda to the work session briefing. And city manager, turn it over to you for the consent items on the agenda.
Hello, everyone. We have several items on consent. Our first item is our minutes from April twentieth, twenty twenty-one for our local council meetings. Our second item, item four B, is a sewer basin survey. This is to consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of professional engineering services, PSA twenty-one oh-two-eight. Each year, public works surveys one of the city sewer basins to identify defects in areas of potential inflow and infiltration. In twenty twenty-one, we are surveying Basin WA, south part of town. Performing annual sewer basin studies is part of our sanitary sewer overflow initiative program agreement with T C E Q.
I was gonna ask a question, and it might be more towards Mr. Rainey, but regarding SSOs and this, I'd like to know if there was any SSOs recently.
We have not had any SSOs yet this year.
Just for everybody who wanted to define SSO.
Oh, a sanitary sewer overflow. So a sanitary sewer overflow occurs when we get excess rainwater into our wastewater lines through I N I.
I N I being?
Infiltration and inflow.
Switched those.
And it results in the pipes running too full, and so the surcharge comes out manholes.
Now, the last time you gave us some briefings on those SSOs, we were encouraged to know that you felt that our data was more reliable than other cities, even though we were reporting some SSOs and it looked possibly negatively. You felt that we're doing that because our data is more accurate than others.
Well, I mean, I don't know about the data we got in other cities. I mean, I know that we follow the rules and we declare all of them like we are supposed to.
That's kind of, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. And we'll tee it up for you again. That's usually something we talk about during the budget workshop, sir. But again, yes, we have not had any this year so far. And so I think it's just, you know, again, showing that our, you know, the efforts that we've been putting into both the basin studies that help us identify them and then furthermore with the pipe bursting work that we do every year, you know, is showing that the plan is working.
Great question, great information. Pat.
So if I understand you correctly, then this is an initial step in the ongoing maintenance of our sewer infrastructure and also to determine where is the best places in and around town to do additional maintenance work on?
Yes, sir.
Sewer infrastructure.
That's correct.
Which is ultimately designed to help control the cost of sewer treatment services that we pay every year from T E.
Yes, sir. The idea is that the only waste discharge that's going to our wastewater treatment plant is truly sanitary sewer and that we are not, we definitely minimize how much rainwater that we are treating at the plant, paying to treat at the wastewater treatment plant.
And inflow and infiltration basically means you have other types of water other than sewer.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be treated by.
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, so you said all these fancy things. Now, let's make it layman's terms for people that live in those areas. How it's going to affect them at all, what should they look for, in layman's terms.
Well, what it, what it, how it affects people in terms of the, in terms of reduction in sanitary sewer overflows, what that means is that if there's a sanitary sewer overflow like in their backyard because there's a sewer line easement, then there's no longer any requirement to respond to that and have to pick, clean it up and disinfect it and things like that. Again, it keeps that discharge out of the creeks. So that improves, you know, the creek water quality and the health, you know, the health of that, that land's wildlife. And then, you know, ideally, if we get to the point where the T R A rates, you know, we, we really clean it up and we're, you know, maybe that will help us again with T R A, how much money we have to pay to the Turner River Authority to treat our wastewater.
And let's not, if I'm looking at the map correctly, I guess it's possibly District Four a lot.
That particular one is mainly in your district, yes, sir.
Okay. And what, I'm just curious, did it left off some portions of it? How does it, how's the map draw?
It's based on how all of the sewer pipe in a particular area, how they flow. So it's sort of lassos where the sewer lines and everything flows to the lowest point as it's going out of the city.
Did you make any notifications to the citizens at all?
We usually notify citizens as we're going through because the way the sanitary sewer testing manifests itself to the individual during the basin study, sir, is that we do what's called smoke testing. And so in the areas where there are, again, as we talked about defects or other issues, you might see smoke coming out of the ground, like there's a, say, like a big cracked pipe, that might come out. Or if the cleanout doesn't have a cap, it would come out. And so they would, what they would more than likely see as, as a, just as a citizen down in that orange area during the smoke testing, they may see some smoke that's tied to the testing process. It was not, you know, it's not harmful, it's, you know, but it is, you know, definitely not an indication of a fire.
You can put this in champion, too.
Okay, we should, we should, we should throw that about.
Yeah, give it widespread publicity throughout the entire city because everybody knows it's different.
There's, there's one little spot here. Is that, is that part of this orange or is that just?
No, I think it's just part of, just probably where they come together. I can't see what you're looking at. Big, big picture, I mean.
Oh, no, I thought you said, yeah, I believe it up there, but I forget it now. All right, thank you.
Now, when y'all did it in our district, we did, we did get pretty good notifications. I mean, letting people know what was gonna happen, but people still saw smoke coming out of there, you know, out of the top of the house, and some people even called the fire department.
So, so what usually happens if smoke is coming out of the house, it means that that is one of those instances where somebody creative has tied in their gutters and downspouts into their wastewater lines, which is not okay.
Not okay.
And so that's how we, you know, how we find that stuff.
Yeah, correct.
Two questions. So although this is to prevent these backups and the infiltration, it's also part of, is this a requirement that the city do this by the T C E Q?
Yes, sir. Because we have sanitary sewer overflows or a history of them, we are enrolled in the SSO initiative program and through which, as long as we have a, we, we tell them we're, you know, our prescribed maintenance that we intend to do to mitigate SSOs in our attempt to be better. When we do have SSOs, we are not penalized by T C Q for their occurrence. And so that's sort of the, the trade-off is we continuously make progress and in turn, if one happens, we don't get penalized by T C Q when it happens. We just have to respond quickly and do all the necessary required notifications.
And the last question is, this is for the engineering portion. You have money budgeted for the actual work costs?
A hundred thousand. The hundred thousand dollars for the work comes out of our O and M budget, our annual budget, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good questions. Moving on.
All right, item four C. We've seen several presentations on the radio equipment for Motorola. A couple of questions that were posed to us earlier is how did our pricing compare to our surrounding communities? And we've discovered that both Cedar Hill, DeSoto, and Lancaster are paying actually more than we are for equipment. A couple of other highlights of it is the talking points of P twenty-four radio will support police, fire, and EMS, inclusive of radios for weather towers where applicable. Based on the number of personnel, numbers of vehicles in which the radios will be installed, cost sharing for S W R C C, P twenty-five radio equipment for both primary and emergency backup locations. Also, fire station alerting, programming of all equipments. And this is year two to seven system upgrade agreement where applicable and timing the city discounts for proportions to each city's cost. And so the reason we are purchasing the equipment is there was a discount offered for doing it in advance. We are still working on the overall agreement between all of the cities with the city of Dallas, but this is a great step for our city in this joint effort.
Recall at our last city council meeting, when Chief Levigny briefed this to us, we accepted all of the terms and conditions and other information and authorized the city through the chief to go ahead and give us a resolution so that we could take advantage of that discount applied for July eighteenth. So this is now formalizing what we agreed to during the briefing of the last city council meeting.
Thank you. And last item is four D, fieldhouse security contract. The original contract, exclusive protection started in September twenty twenty-nine. The basis of this is we have had an uptick, as you've seen in some of our financial reports, in activities happening in our fieldhouses, which is exactly what we want to happen, but it also has resulted in a need for increased security protection. And this is to expand the contract for that.
Just, oh, sorry, right back.
Just real quickly, our relationship with them started in twenty nineteen?
Uh, the contract, the exclusive protection started in September twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And I guess how long is the contract for, or is it?
Contract is two years with a two-to-one-year renewal for a potential of four years.
In any consideration in terms of the necessity for this, I dropped by the fieldhouse today and take a look at the activity calendar on the wall. It is loaded between now and September. Virtually every day, there is something going on in terms of what they are doing to market the fieldhouse and bringing activities in, whether it's camps or whether it's tournaments or so forth. That fieldhouse in terms of needing additional security because of additional activity, it's there. It's almost logarithmic in terms of what's happening there. So if there's any question in terms of this, the necessity for this, my personal response is looking at that activity calendar is we need more, we need more activity. We're having more activities, we need more security activity in order to control these things. Yeah, Greg, add a question.
Who actually does, assesses those activities and events to determine when and how many extra security officer do we need?
That is our fieldhouse general manager and his assistant. But I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of the activities that happen on the weekends do require security. And keep in mind, all of those events that happen on the weekends, the event holders are the ones who are responsible for paying the security cost. So it's a pass-through cost to them.
So that's where we've got the hundred percent of the fees charged.
One hundred percent of those security fees, that's correct.
Okay.
So are these police officers, I'm sorry, tell me more about the security. Is this armed security?
They're armed security and they are well-built and look like security.
They're not Duncanville police officers.
They're not Duncanville police officers, that's correct.
Oh, I was gonna add.
Not that certain.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that way. I meant as far as, with a lot of organizations, what you do is you hire off-duty police officers from your city, and so this is actually a security company contract.
I'm back with security.
I just thought, I said, they pulled that fire truck.
I saw.
I was gonna say, probably look like me.
Well, you see some security companies that. You get, you get ten dollars an hour.
So, so, I was gonna add, so, have we ever tried to talk to our police to see if that was some off-duty work they wanted to do as well?
We have not.
I believe, now I may be talking about the school. There are some very strict parameters in the civil service agreement with law enforcement in terms of their off-duty work.
It is said to be classified. Well, I just wanted to make sure if it was something that they wanted to do, that they at least have an opportunity to talk. I know I, you said.
Chief, is there a preclusion? I think there's something in preclusion on the civil service about that.
We, we do work off-duty jobs. Now, I think what sometimes happens is because they have so many activities up there, they, they have to have standing security. Sometimes we get bogged down, we have absences due to training or other things. You have to have that ahead of time. So we could work up there. I don't think there's any, any prohibition that would play into that other than just managing the folk, our folks and their employment.
Yeah, Mr. Hager.
Yeah, since it's a city facility and there are city police officers, the amount of overtime you would incur would be significant. It's not off-duty if they're at a city facility. You can call it off-duty, but at the end of the day, the Labor Department's gonna say that they're working as police officers at a city facility on time. So if they're occurring, you're gonna have a huge overtime bill.
Okay, thank you. And then talk about the liability of the security, security company. Are we liable at all to them, something happens, whatever they do that was incorrect? Are we liable to protect the city?
There are, there's agreement in place that tries to protect us as much as possible. I can't, I can't speak to the legality of.
Have you looked at that city attorney to see where liability stands?
Liability, you know, so we've neglected, we only hire if a provider.
Have you looked at the contract?
Yes.
Yeah, he was in the original contract.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have item E, one last one.
All right. Item E is the resolution authorizing auxiliary payment for Gen X Energy in amount of one ninety-five seven-two-nine. That is the presentation we had relating to Winter Storm Marie last week. Same scenario where all of the cities who are members are being assessed. And although we could not share the amounts, our, our cost is in line with other organizations. And what we agreed to do was pay this upfront versus due payments. As I spoke to my peers, their payment arrangement and payment plans were, had pretty heavy interest charges on them. And so, and rather than incur the interest, we would use fund balance and reserves to cover this cost.
This is another item from our last city council meeting where it was presented to us in terms of which funds and moneys were gonna come out of. We talked about where those funds should be divided up. And we agreed in terms of what was given to us, that this is the formalization of that information as well, to bring it forward so we can get on with this one.
Okay.
That includes a discussion on our consent items. Moving on to item number two is briefing some presentations. Briefing to city council regarding the twenty twenty-one Independence Day celebration. Mr. Park Stevenson, Parkson Red.
Before I talk about the July fourth, again, I want to bring to your attention that we also delivered to you tonight the packets for the Juneteenth event in DeSoto this Saturday. We delivered those this afternoon. She wanted me to stress to you that the run-of-show is on the back of your V I P pass. And I believe they're gonna be recognizing all of the elected officials at seven-twenty. So if you want to be recognized, be sure you are at the stage area at seven-twenty at Grams Park.
If you don't want to be recognized, don't be there.
There you go. Also, in front of you, we delivered your July fourth V I P packet for our event, and we'll talk about that here. The background on the July fourth event here in Duncanville is that it's been going for many, many decades. I couldn't go back far enough to find where it started, but I do know, talking to Mr. McNerney, that the parade started at least forty-plus years ago. So it's been a long time. The Lions Club does operate our parade. They've done so for about forty years. And before that, I understand it was the Chamber of Commerce. So it's been around for quite a while. The Lions Club handles all the registrations and execution of the parade. The city provides all the street barricades, street control, police services. NIM Corp. will provide you your transportation and your candy to hand out to participants. Then for the evening event, that is all done by the city. We are using Pyrotechnico as our Pyrotechnician again this year. It's our fourth year of a four-year contract, so we'll be going back out to bid this fall on winter for those services. They've done a great job for us in the past. The budget for this event, a revised budget actually, is about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Currently, we're sitting at, expecting to spend about ninety-five thousand dollars of that. That could go up or down slightly depending on personnel use that day. And then we do get a small amount of revenues for this event from the food and non-food vendors. Some of the highlights, again, as we discussed before, the event will be held on Saturday, July third. That's for both the parade as well as the evening's celebration. The parade in the morning is the title, Land of the Free, Home of the Parade. The grand marshals this year are Bob Lee and Dr. Phil Dover. The lineup for the parade starts at eight AM. And as always, for council to get you to your spots without avoiding, with avoiding street closure, without avoiding street closures, or for avoiding street closures, we need you here at the library at eight AM. So you can park behind the library, the staff parking lot, they're off of Nance, and we will get, take you by bus over to the start area. And then you can take your carts back over to behind the library and leave them there. We'll take a few minutes. By show of hands, how many people need a driver for your cart? So we, we can't provide drivers, or you can drive them yourselves. Now, you like to drive yourself typically.
I think they all pretty much drive themselves.
Y'all wanna drive yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have carts big enough to handle, I know, some of our larger families now. So I've got that taken care of as well. For the evening event, again, we hand out twelve thousand wristbands. Those are ongoing already. We've already seen quite a, quite a brisk business in that to date. Our music is the Inspiration Band, we'll have bounce houses, activities, you have food and non-food vendors. Fireworks start at nine-thirty, and there will be a V I P tent as always. And this year, it's being catered by Papa's Barbecue. And then your parking will be here at City Hall.
Interestingly, on the news, on Channel eleven news last night, they did a quick blurb on Addison Boomtown. And for their first time, they are issuing wristbands at no charge to control.
Control the crowd.
Participation.
I saw that as well.
And I said, that's nice, they're catching up with us.
We are the leaders.
We don't think it could have exposure. We need to keep you there exposure.
And as a reminder, we do close the portion of Main Street from Wheatland North to Center during the event to allow for the pedestrian traffic. So for all the folks who park over at the churches in that area to cross the street safely during our event. And with that, I'll ask, answer any questions you might have.
So, Bob, we weren't able to do this last year because of the pandemic. And I guess the underlying theme behind these events going on all over the country is kind of like welcome back, independence from COVID and that sort of thing. So is that gonna be reflected in the candy that you give us to throw?
It's not last year's candy.
Every year, you guys challenge me on getting enough candy for you to hand out.
No, not enough.
I think in twenty.
Not enough candy.
Twenty nineteen became pretty close, as close we've ever been.
Not enough candy, the really, the goods. We want people to feel welcome back, so we want to give them the really good candy.
We will make sure we have excellent candy as well as chocolate.
Yes, very good. That's the answer to my.
Chocolate, that's included in your memo in your, in your packet, that we will be here to give you chocolate candy as well as. Yeah, we have not forgotten that.
Is that the large bag you was walking with, I saw you?
As a sidebar, remember that you cannot throw the candy. I don't know, you're probably.
And that's why.
That is the city ordinance.
Right, and that's why we provide you the golf carts, so you can ride along the sides and hand it out.
Well, if it's the regular candy, you don't want to throw it because it's hard candy.
It's true.
I saw you get out with a Jolly Rancher.
It can be done.
You'll return back to the first screen. I have one more question, keep going back. So my question here, so let me first of all start this out by saying how much I appreciate the Lions Club and the Chamber for doing this for forty years. I think it's great and excellent to continue it. But as I look at this and I think about everything else that we do in line, we really still need to have some type of contract between us and the Lions Club that's in writing that can foresee this past us as well. And in forty years, unless you tell me we have one, there's not a contract set up.
I'm not aware of a contract.
So I'm thinking we also need some type of contract, whether it's now or later. The second part of this is when I look at the responsibility from the Lions Club and from the city, this is city dollars that we're spending. Therefore, I think the title of this should be the City of Duncanville's Parade and not the Lions Club Parade. Nothing against the Lions Club. I think in part with them as well.
Bring me graphic over here on the fire.
But I, I do see where, I do see, I see us doing it here, joining the city of Duncanville, celebrating on national.
Yeah, I don't see Lions on there anymore.
Well, there's, well, if you look throughout some of our social media, I see Lions throughout.
We have, we've shown it in places here.
I'm sorry, say it again?
We have, we have shown that in places, yes.
Okay. So I'm just thinking as a headliner, we do need to, number one, have some type of responsibility. We're spending a hundred and five thousand dollars, and there's no other event. And we did this great event, we love it, our citizens love it. But I think we need to make sure that this headliner, number one, we have some type of contract that we have with any other vendor. And number two, with the money that we're spending, that it is considered the City of Duncanville's Parade with that title, if you want to put in part with the Lions Club because all the forty years, I think that's great, but it's something to consider.
And I hear what you're saying, but I'll also say that it's a volunteer organization that's doing it. And they have been doing it for a number of years. They don't accept money except for the applications that they, they put out. We work in coordination with the city and have to obtain a permit from the city to do the firm.
And I know, it's, it's a good, good cause, and I have just nothing against it, said before, Lions Club. And I've seen plenty of other parades, participated in parades as well that were city-driven.
Mr. Kirk's comments could be considered, y'all, excellent. There's something I would like your input on?
Oh, let me, let me finish it up, finish up here. So, so when you talk about in consideration, I think it's more than a consideration. I think it's something that we're talking about that we as a council need to set up.
And that's for them, they've heard your comments, and for staff to take that on as a, as an item and come back to us. But I don't know if we have time to actually incorporate anything until between now and July third.
We don't, but I want to make sure it's for the record that we have that down and that we continue to see our name as Duncanville on this, on this city parade or we're spending the great hundred and five thousand for what we should.
The, the money spent on the fireworks.
But still, we are.
It's not on the, it's not spent on the.
And I agree, but we're saying the money is a total amount that's making the entire event happen. So I just, so to, if, if Art's gonna take it, I'll bring us something back later. I'd love to see it later.
I have something I would like your input on, council. I have invited Starling Stringer from K L T Y. She is a local radio personality. She is a graduate of Duncanville High School. And she has accepted the invitation to come to our fireworks. What I don't know is, I have ideas, but I would like your inputs in terms of what we should do for her. Of course, I will bring her up and introduce her at the beginning of the evening at six o'clock as a, as a celebrity in addition to introducing you as all council members.
Mary, Mary? Usually, though, we do that at seven-thirty, I just want to make sure that we have the timeline because we want to, we want to make sure the people, we have lots of people there to see you.
Whatever time you tell me is fine. So at seven-thirty, when we do that stuff, I don't know exactly what to do with her. I'm very happy that she's coming. She's very excited to be coming as a Duncanville High School graduate. You know that I have that thing called, you know, Champion of the City? I'm not sure that that applies as a past resident, past graduate. I was thinking maybe the possibility of giving her a key to the city. Do we have a key? We got a key around somewhere?
We do have a key to the city.
So I could recognize her as, for that stuff and give her a key to the city at seven-thirty-two.
Do we have any criteria around?
Sorry?
Do we have any criteria around?
No, we don't.
So I, as I said, I'm, that's the way I'm thinking, and I wanted to get your input on it because I don't want.
I don't know, who, who is it we're talking about?
Starling Stringer is a K L T Y radio personality. K L T Y is a Christian radio station. And I think it's from what they're advertising and their nomenclature, they're the largest Christian radio station in the United States. And she's been on, what are they, six-thirty to ten-thirty or something like that every morning, Monday through Friday. So she's quite well-known throughout the, the radio environment in that industry and as, as a Christian radio broadcaster. So having her here, I think it's, it's gonna be great, you know, some fun to have her, whatever she wants to say. I'm not gonna script her. As a, as a radio personality, she needs no scripting. She's quite eloquent and articulate on the fly if you ever listen. She's quite eloquent and articulate on the fly, if you ever listen to her on the radio in the morning. Uh, but, uh, so what do you think, just a key to the city? I, I don't, do I need to give her a piece of paper on top of that, or just reenter it?
I, I can make a certificate. I can make something pretty.
You can make something pretty? Make something?
We'll take care of it.
Yeah, we'll watch this.
Okay, so y'all, key to the city, okay? And then whatever Christian, you know.
The other reason, I'll keep bending this down, Art, the other reason I say too is that you brand this as Duncanville, uh, independence thing. And the other thing, if we go back, because when you look at, when we look at who we're honoring, which again, I don't know them, and I think it's great to honor who we gotta honor, but we have no participation from a city level. If you wanted to recognize someone, Mayor, from a city perspective, that we can honor as well during the parade, uh, as the grand marshal. And that's why I say that the whole piece of this being one event for, uh, Lions Club and the city's taking, to me taking the back door, I think we just need to keep looking at it. So what you add that to your list is, I would like for us to participate in making sure that the city recognized someone as grand marshal, as well as who the Lions Club has recognized.
Mayor, I wanna be cautious about how we extricate the Lions Club efforts in this thing. I don't think you could pull this project off without the Lions Club. Uh, they provide a lot of support, a lot of support, and they always have, and there's no charge, and they're not looking for fame and glory on this. So let's just walk carefully how we extricate their, their, their name out of this. I understand what you're saying, and I agree. It is the City of Duncanville celebration, but I wanna make sure that they're, they're acknowledged in some way in our advertising, that they're, they're a big part of this.
And I agree, that's why I started out by saying that I, I, I bagged you what they're doing, what they're gonna do in the forty years. So it's not cutting that short. I know many of you around the table are Lions for sure, but it is not about that. It is really still about a combination of both, and recognizing both more so. This is not, this is not about the Lions.
But, but you know who our grand marshals are?
I don't.
Okay, it's Bob Lee.
No, no, I saw the names, but when you asked me if I know them, no, I don't know.
And Bob Lee was the, uh, he's officially Public Works Director for Duncanville, and he worked for Duncanville thirty-nine years. Got the street name after him that leads into the thing, so he's been a service, he's the one that actually set up our water system.
He's a low tide.
And I'm not, and I'm not cutting any of that short, gentlemen. I'm just telling you, I'm not cutting any of that short, I recognize, I understand that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, anything else, Art?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, Jim.
This may have come in my absence, but how much did we save from not doing it last year, or did we save anything, or was there anything?
We saved most of the budget. We, we had a few expenses that were in our, um, like we paid the, uh, deposit, uh, deposit for the band, but that's being carried forward to twenty twenty-two when they come back.
It's kind of a misnomer to say save. Cuz we didn't really save anything, we just avoided the expense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I don't, to be. Update the city council regarding trash collection by Republic Services during the winter storm event, which occurred February twenty twenty-one. Mr. Ram.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and council. Um, just as, again, before we get started, I just wanna recognize, uh, with us, uh, this evening are two folks from Republic, Scott Hempel and Joanna Fritz. Um, so they're here as well. Just again, some background, we're sort of rehashing some stuff, uh, some of the items, uh, which sort of, uh, ticked off the, uh, or, uh, started the discussion where we went to council previously. So again, this was all, uh, generated from the, uh, the ice storm. Uh, you'll see the timeline about when commercial and residential collection resumed and bulk and brush. So again, um, in April sixth, at the request of Councilman Anderson, we had an initial discussion about, uh, the winter storm response. Staff met with Republic, um, about the city's concerns, uh, at the end of April. And then, um, again, the reason why our meeting tonight is, uh, Councilman Cooks requested a follow-up on that, um, meeting. Um, so again, uh, we, when we met in April, uh, we talked about, uh, again, um, the credits. Again, Republic has said that there was, um, they had no, uh, no cities were issued any credits, um, for, uh, during the winter storm, Yuri, uh, and that, um, there was no credit, um, that they were in, um, giving to the city, um, as well for the winter storm. Uh, what they did say though is, you know, a lot of the challenges that we had tied, were tied to the bag collection. Uh, the cities that they had, that had cart collection were more successful. And as you look on the next slide, it was one of the things that they're providing us is for, that we'll bring back to council for consideration, if desire is, is a, a least proposal to provide carts. And then at the time, we did take an opportunity to discuss some other, uh, customer service issues that, that we had with them, and again, we'll, I'll summarize that here. So what we identified were the corrective actions. So we had asked for some month-over-month statistics for the last three to five years. Um, we were using that because, you know, again, one of the things, uh, that Republic, you know, has, has noticed was that our, the, uh, collection tonnage has been going up steadily, and so we were just asking for the, the data to do that. We do have, um, some, uh, partial. Uh, I've seen, um, some of the, the statistics for the last three years, but only the first few months of those years. Um, we may have gotten something, I just haven't, uh, seen those, um, since I got that. We did ask them to review the call center script. Again, that was tied back to some of our customer service issues that we had, and Joanna, um, went and reviewed the call center to make sure that the folks on the phone, um, have all the right information they need to take care of our customers when they call them. Um, again, uh, they mentioned we're providing us with some cart conversion pricing, and we received those on Friday, and so we, we've had some, um, dialogue back and forth with Joanna on that, but we're not ready to, uh, bring that forward yet. Um, and then we are asking for some contingency planning, so that we have a better understanding what to expect in the event that we have any other, uh, times where, um, services interrupted. Um, and then we do, um, we did acknowledge since, uh, the twenty-sixth of April, we've had very, uh, much improved communication and customer service, um, in terms of, of the, the calls that we get and handle, in terms of, um, the response and, um, that the, the city, um, residents are getting when they call the call center. So that's, that has been improved.
How'd you measure, how'd you measure that, Tony?
Um, in terms of the improved communication, the way we're measuring is basically how many calls we're getting, and what type of calls that we're getting that, that, at the service center. Um, typically, uh, what we get at the service center, you know, the calls that we're, we usually flag are the ones where they calling us because they got some, they felt like they got some misinformation when they called the, um, called the call center. And so something that had happened in the past, and I know Joanna, again, inscribed it, um, there, there've been some old scripts about levels of service that they can anticipate, um, or like when their dumpster, you know, when they're not their dumpster, but when their garbage would be collected and things like that. So what we're, what we're typically doing, um, is we keep a log of what we, what calls we get, but again, the ones that we're concerned about specifically are the, tend to be the ones more about misinformation that maybe they got from the, from the call center. Um, and then, you know, another part is, part of our communication is making sure we have the dialogue when we have the individuals that, um, call us to, because they, their garbage got picked, how well, how responsive are we in getting back out there and resolving those kinds of customer issues?
Uh, Ms. Fritz, would you might wanna comment on, I know that you monitor those calls coming into your service center.
We do.
In terms of your, if you or Scott's personal, listening to some of those conversations and, and making notes or annotations, or some recommendations from what you two have personally heard in terms of how your people are discussing with our customers?
We, we get those, and when, when we identify an issue, we notify the supervisor who is over that area, and they coach that, that customer service representative on, you know, where they may have given misinformation, or how they misinterpreted what they saw. Um, we did identify some things in the scripts that needed to be corrected, and those have been corrected. Um, and I've got a recurring calendar item now to make sure I go in, and if there, you know, every quarter, if there's been anything that we've adjusted, that I go in and make sure that, that I've already gotten that cleaned up in the system, so that our customer service representatives have the most current information.
And some things that I've seen as well, just to piggyback off that, when we get people calling us, um, with a, a complaint about basically, let's say misinformation, and then they call us, we turn around and then give that same information back to Joanna about, hey, someone at one, two, three Main Street called, they said that when they called the call center, they were told, you know, misinformation about when their garbage would be picked up. And then that way, they can go back and find where that, you know, existed in their system, and then again, incorporate that into a.
We can pull that call by the phone number that we get.
Well, you know, I, I love it, I love it verbally, uh, I do, because you give me information, but it, it will, it will behoove us to have a more chart that we can look at at some point. I know I personally receive calls from, uh, from, from citizens, and then, and to give Joanna credit, uh, when I need it to, I just pick up the phone and call her if she took care of it. But at some point, when, when I talk to, when I talk to constituents, we have nothing else to look at. So, again, if you're telling me we're keeping it, we need to see it.
We, we, we can start doing it, and something that we've been putting into our weekly updates in, in the utilities, um, report, is how many calls that they received that week related to, um, uh, collections, whether it had to be a recycling question, or bulk and brush collection, or whatever. And so we can certainly start packaging that up in, uh, some kind of tracker.
Scott, you wanted to comment on that?
I did, I, I get a report like that monthly, that gives an overview of, uh, our entire market, and I believe I can get that, uh, pared down to specifically for Duncanville. We did that, and I get a, a chart, just like what you're talking about, and an overview from, uh, the, the, uh, Customer Resource Center Supervisor. So I get that monthly, I'm sure we can, uh, segment that out for Duncanville.
And, and, and here's, here's why I ask, because as we sat around the table for this, to talk about this contract, what, a year or so, a year or so ago, and we decided not to go out to bid for the contract, and that was, I took that based upon hearing citizens tell, telling me our trash, Republic was great, Republic was great. But as soon as we signed the contract, then I started hearing from the other citizens who're saying Republic is, Republic is not great. So I had nothing other than verbally to look at. So this is why I'm asking, not, not only picking on Republic, but I'm saying to you that, uh, having a chart where we can look at this, whether they're calling it here, whether they're calling Republic, for us to have a better idea of what's going on.
Well, we certainly.
You know, Scott, if you could craft that so that our staff doesn't have to do any work for that.
No, and it'd be pretty tricky.
Give us something that's very specific to us, but it's coming so that Bart, uh, not Bart, uh, bringing his staff don't have to rework data and then go through Excel spreadsheets and so forth. Less work for them, more information for us.
It's how, how detailed you want it, I can get it down pretty, pretty granular as far as the details, so.
Okay, great.
Mayor, we've also added a section in our champion, just to remind people of, of their contact in the next, uh, newsletter that's coming out, because we wanna make sure people understand that those are tracked through Republic, not the city, and so we want, we threw a blurb in there, and the next, but we can also, we wanna communicate, can also highlight, how do you communicate to them, so that we can make sure all of the calls are going to the right place? So we've already done that in the next newsletter.
And I thought I heard at one point that we were gonna have some, I don't know, it was from Republic or from, from the city, because you have some signs up saying Book Week, or whatever else, and, and a particular entryway. Was that, was that from, uh, Robin, who mentioned it, when we talked about?
We had, we had done that, um, way back when, when we had a different way of collecting it, but now we days, what we do is, one week it's north of Wheatland, and then the next week it's south of Wheatland, and so we don't really.
They don't remember that.
We don't, we don't, um, put out, uh, signs like that, no, sir.
All right, and then the, the other part, the other reason I was bringing it back up, because I know we talked about in our contract, and city manager agreed you can address this. Tell me what happens when, uh, Republic is perhaps not performing up to their contract? What's in the contract that tells us that we can come back to them and ask for, um, credit or restitution, or, or ask what's going on when they're, when they're holding up to their contract? I know it's in the contract.
It, it is, there is clauses in the contract for that. I don't, I don't know it offhand. I know one of the things that, um, basically the only thing, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, cuz it sort of came up in discussion last year, was, you know, every year within our contract, um, Republic has the, 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 the right in, per contract, to request a increase in their, their rates.
That's right.
That's tied to the CPI all urban. And what came up last year was if we, um, the only thing where council could deny the, what they were asking for, is if it was tied to some performance. I, I think that's what you had said last year.
Yes. Yes, I didn't speak up, but that is correct.
So you're, we're, we're still not, you're answering, but you're not answering. So you, you're telling me it's in the contract, we don't know how it reads, uh, city manager?
I don't, I didn't, I don't have it memorized, I don't know what, I couldn't tell you what the clause is off the top of my head, sir. I just know in general, yes, there is, and typically what, how it manifests itself is if, um, we feel that they were not performing, and, um, then per, you know, what Bob has said, we could, you know, come down off of a, a particular thing.
There's not a penalty clause, if that's what.
Is that what?
A penalty clause in the contract. You can't have a penalty clause in the contract. If they're in breach, you can sue for restitution.
No, that's not what I'm talking about in contract. So I would ask you or the city manager, go back and relook at this contract.
We can certainly go back and look at the contract.
That's not, that's not what we.
See what, what, what the clauses are in there that would apply to a, a concern. I, I, I just don't have it off the top of my head, sir.
Well, cuz, cuz the reason I was coming back to this is because the issue that we had, and I know everybody in Texas experienced what we experienced. I'm not worried about everybody in Texas, I'm worried about Duncanville. And so really, what that means to me then is, I was trying to use that clause to see if there's any restitution that the City of Duncanville need to receive back from Republic in reference to, uh, the areas where we had concern with, uh, of the trash not being picked up during that time. But if we don't even know what's in that contract, to tell me.
Well, I know what's in the contract, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, so if we will, uh, look like that.
We can certainly look at the contract.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes what we have for briefings, presentations, and our working briefing session, and I believe we have enough time to do the second session. So we will recess our briefing session at, where do we have, six forty-eight? Yeah, six forty-eight?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our city council meeting for June the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. On our time, uh, that we are convening is seven oh seven for the record. Thank you very much for being here in person. This is our second time to be in person, so we're still getting use once again to seeing live human beings here in the chamber, and we're very happy to see that. So thank you for coming. Making note myself. All right, uh, proceeding on in our agenda is the invocation, and for our invocation, we have Deacon Gene Freeman from Holy Spirit Catholic Church. Y'all please rise for the prayer.
Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first of all, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you, or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our time. interests and issues of our time, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and also, Father, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Duncanville. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Moving on to item number one, our agenda, it's the reports from the mayor, council, and city managers. The, mine is going to be very brief. The first thing I want to do is remind everyone about our July 4th celebration, which is actually going to be on July 3rd. And if you weren't privy to our discussions as a council on making everything on July 3rd, we're taking into consideration July 4th actually falling on a Sunday, and that have some conflicts for a lot of people in terms of their religious activities. So the parade and our celebration and fireworks is going to take place on July 3rd. So we hope everybody can come out for that, and if you would like to participate or come to Armstrong Park for the fireworks in the evening, at the rec center, we are handing out wristbands, you don't have to pay for them, but that's a manner in which we can control access and know how many people are there. So thank you very much for that. Last item I'd like to bring to your attention, I'm sure that no one is surprised by the temperatures that we're experiencing right now and the fact that ERCOT, that's almost a dirty word, that ERCOT has come out and asked us to try to conserve energy, because some of the generator plants are experiencing, they're down, let's just put it that way. So I want to thank our citizens for what they did when we, for Winter Storm Yuri, because I asked our citizens to conserve on water when that particular storm hit, and our citizens came to the, came up and did exactly what we needed to do. So for our citizens here in Duncanville, don't know what else is happening around the entire state, but want to exhort and ask our citizens in the city of Duncanville to do everything they can to conserve energy and power, so that we don't have to go through any rolling blackouts or brownouts or whatever ERCOT and Encore may determine is necessary. That's all that I have for the mayor's report. Any council member reports? Mr. Cooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I want to just kind of make an announcement for our meet, connect, and learn, that's going to be on the last Saturday in this month. The guest will be State Representative Yvonne Davis. She will talk about any updates that has happened since the closing of the 87th session. So you're more than welcome to join that by Zoom, and I will have that out pretty soon for you to look at and to identify with State Representative Yvonne Davis, and you'll be able to talk with her direct and ask her any questions that you have. Perhaps if you can't make that, she also has a town hall meeting on the 17th of this month. I'm not sure of the location, but there is a town hall meeting for our area, for State Representative Yvonne Davis, giving again the 87th update. Secondly, I'd like to invite you out to our first bike ride. Bike riding is back, and so I've identified the bike ride. The Councilman Jeremy Coontz and myself are hosting a fun bike ride. We've identified the title differently this time. It is called Tour D. Duncanville Bike Ride. And we're going to be riding through neighborhoods on this coming Saturday. We're going to meet at 8 o'clock, right near the Recreation Center. For those that ride bikes, please come out and ride. If we're coming down your street and in your neighborhood, if you have water out, we'll stop by and drink water with you. But if not, we're going to pass right on by and have fun. We're expecting some good riders, some good fun, as we tour the Duncanville Bike Ride. And then last thing is the Juneteenth event. I think our parks and rec recognize that as a collaborative cities, Duncanville, Cedar Hill, DeSoto, we're all having our event on Juneteenth together. So I'll ask you to come out and enjoy, enjoy Juneteenth with all of the other cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Cruz.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give a shout out to our own Director Noel Garza of the Rec Center, hosted an outdoor concert back on June the 5th, as well attended, great band, and we had a great time, and I appreciate all his effort in that and his team. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm Mr. McNabb Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to simply say, I hope everybody knows that this Sunday is Father's Day. I wish all my council members, I know you're all fathers, and I want to wish you a happy Father's Day as well.
What'd you get me?
Pardon?
What'd you get me?
Oh, well, wait till Sunday.
Same thing I got last year, I know.
But good time to honor dads, so thank you.
Thank you. One thing I neglected to mention, that tomorrow, I am reinstituting Coffee with the Mayor. I suspended it when COVID hit. We did do it in person at the senior center. The last one that we had, I had about 25 individuals. Tomorrow, it is all virtual, and so that will kick off at 8:30. It's got an 8:30 to a 9:30 complete stop. And I think in the champion newsletter, there is a link to that if you would like to participate and have coffee with me tomorrow. Bring your own coffee from wherever you're at, I'd be happy to have you if you'd like to enjoy. So with that, City Manager's report.
Briefly, Mayor, I'd like to congratulate the library with our summer reading kickoff. It went very well. We had almost 200 attendees. I'd like to thank the team for this effort. The library is now open from 8:00 PM, open until 8:00 PM, Monday through Wednesday, and it's open on Saturdays again. And so I want to thank our team for that effort, and we look forward to seeing you guys this weekend in DeSoto.
Duncanville?
Nope, Juneteenth.
It's, I know. Okay, we're all together.
There we go, Juneteenth.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, Proclamations and Presentations, recognition of Keep Duncanville Beautiful Summer 2021 curb appeal residential properties, Mr. Timothy Hamilton, our park superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor and council and City Manager. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening and show you some of the properties that our Keep Duncanville Beautiful board members have driven around in each of the districts represented here up at the dais and have found these properties to be exemplary and to be examples in their neighborhoods. And I'd like to recognize the board members who participate in doing this. We have Ignacio Cruz, Demetra Miller, Barbara McComb, Alice Arnold, and Liz Smith, and they're the five that represent the five districts that drive around and select these properties. So I'm going to start off with District 1. We have Rafael Ramos at 1027 Lansdale Drive. And I'm going to ask if you are present here, and one of these property owners, if you would head to the front, and we'll take a picture at the end. District 2, Rebecca Garza at 310 Robin Hill Lane. I'm sorry, I need to catch up there. District 3 is Lyndon Thompson at 706 Monroe Drive. The District 4 winner is Dennis Bell at 1526 Lime Leaf Lane. And representing District 5 is Gordon Mangum at 903 Georgetown Drive. And so I'd just like to encourage our council and all of our citizens to recognize these outstanding members of our community and for their beautification efforts. And I know we have the District 4 representative, the winner, he had a nice story to tell me when, if you want to come on down, we'll get your picture. He had said that one of his neighbors a few years ago had won the award, and he said, I want to get that, I want to have that sign in my yard, and he told his wife that, and when he got the letter, he said, look, look, honey, I did it. So I think that's really cool. So thank you for coming. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton, and thank you to all the board and commission members that participate in that and to our citizens as well. And thank you for taking the time to come to our City Council meeting tonight, we do appreciate it very much. Mr. Coontz, I see you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to personally thank George, because I know that that's not easy. It takes a lot of work to do that, but, and also to Timothy, because I know not just this program, but Keep Duncanville Beautiful does so much, and that's an all voluntary effort, and so we really appreciate everything that y'all are doing, and really just leading by example on that, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving on to item number 2B, a proclamation and recognition of Juneteenth Day in Duncanville 2021. Mr. Cooks has mentioned it, and City Manager Aretha Farrell Benavides has mentioned it as well. I do have a proclamation here that I would personally like to read tonight. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived at Galveston, Texas to enforce President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation and declare freedom for all slaves. And whereas each year thereafter, former Texas slaves and their descendants joined in the celebration of freedom on June 19th, and the day became known as Juneteenth. And whereas across our nation, Americans continue to celebrate Juneteenth, a day to reflect upon the sufferings of slavery and to remember the joyful Declaration of Freedom. And whereas, it is a time of rejoicing with family and friends and a time for planning the future. And whereas, the 2021 Best Southwest Juneteenth Celebration will be held on June 19th, 2021, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Grimes Park, 501 East Wintergreen Road in DeSoto, Texas, 75115. Therefore, I, Ariel Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth Recognition Day in Duncanville, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the importance of this date in the history of the African-American culture. This celebration acknowledges the history of an important part of American society and aids in unifying our city and our nation as a whole. So we want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. And as it was said, it is a great event and something, if you wonder, this, the Juneteenth celebration moves between the three cities, and this year, it happens to be the responsibility of DeSoto. So it will rotate into the city of Duncanville when we actually have our turn. Do you remember when our turn's coming up? I think ours is next year, if I recall the rotation. 23, 2023. We've got one more, another cycle. Okay, well, thank you very much, and we appreciate your attention to that. Moving on to item number three, citizens input. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda items may be referred to city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. At this time, two-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the council, we have some that have submitted cards to me, we will be calling upon them. We also have information or emails that have been sent to the city that I will be reading, and I'm also apprised that we have one individual who will be making comments via virtual reality. No, she's here, I'm sorry. Okay, so when I call that person's name, it'd be Heather Winkelman, don't come up yet? I have to take these in the order that we have them. So the first one that I have is from Jerry Moses. I read them as they are, verbatim, with no graphic, with no punctuation, no grammar, no changes, exactly as they are written. The paper that is thrown in yards every week, briefing paren, quotes, needs to be stopped. I pick up trash bag every week, people don't read them or even bother to pick them up and put them in the trash. It makes the neighborhood look so trashy. Thank you for listening, Judy Moses. Second item is from Patricia Lehman. No address indicated. To whom it may concern, I have lived in Duncanville for 32 years in both a house and an apartment. Lately, I have noticed more litter on Main Street and on the outskirts of Armstrong Park. I realize that Duncanville as a city is continuing to grow and funds are probably limited, but something needs to be done about the increasing amount of litter. I feel privileged to live in such a diverse community as Duncanville and only want what is best for everyone. Third item I have is from Cozia, Cozia, I'm sorry, Cozia Stephens. Hello, members of the city council. I am a city of Dunk, I am a citizen of Duncanville and constituent of Mr. McNabb Burnett that lives on Tanglewood Drive. I want to first of all thank you for serving our community in your chosen capacity. I've lived in Duncanville off and on for over 30 years since 1989. My family and I have been getting more involved with the community and cleaning up our neighborhood and the city parks. When I go back to admire our work, it sometimes looks like we never picked up a thing. My family went and helped with the cleanup along Wheatland, and soon afterwards, trash was lining the streets again the same as before. The worst is by the Lad Land in and around Ten Mile Creek. More people, quote, "mess with Texas," end quote, than I realized. I wanted to ask that there be more of a commitment by our city to helping those of us that are concerned about the negative environment impact, environmental impacts on the litter on our waterways, local wildlife, spread of disease, et cetera. This is in addition to how unsightly it is around our neighborhoods, businesses, and our parks. I feel that I can ask for this as both a resident and one that has put skin in the game. I'm glad to see that Keep Duncan Beautiful is on the agenda for a proclamation. I look forward to seeing what becomes of this in our everyday lives. Thank you for your time. Next is Heather Winkelman in attendance. Ms. Winkelman? And please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Heather Winkelman. I actually live in Cedar Hill at 461 Whitley Street. I have been involved with Duncanville Community Theater since 2012. These people are my family, it's very important to me. Many of you, I know you've come to see shows, or I know you from my short tenure with the city of Duncanville. These people are my family, that is my second home. We appreciate your support so very much, and I urge you to consider a 20-year lease as opposed to the five-year that is on the agenda for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next citizen comment is, I will read, is from Jordan Patterson. No address indicated. And this was originally sent to Mr. Coontz and forwarded to the entire council. Hey, Jeremy, as you know, I am a father of two boys under the age of four and married to my wife Caitlin. We have lived in our house on Center Street for four years. I'm writing to you to address a few matters of concern. One, trash. On my own property alone, I daily find trash in my yard in the forms of bags, cans, cigarette boxes, and more. This is also really bad in Kidsville, where my children play, particularly when people have big cookouts or birthday parties, there is usually a ton of trash. It. The increase in homeless people on the bridge of I-20 and Cockrell Hill, I have noticed, has led to an increase of trash on that part of town as well. In light of the broken window theory, I think improving trash and city cleanliness will improve the city as a whole. Item number two, speeding. On East Center Street alone, per ends, a school zone area closed per ends, at least 50% of the cars that drive down are going above the speed limit of 30 miles per hour. It's very scary at times when my family is going for a walk and my son is learning to ride his bike. Solution, colon, put in speed bumps starting from Center and Main going all the way down past Bird Middle School. Item three, public decency. I was walking with my son past Mud Hook and Rice Pot this past weekend, and I noticed- with my son past Mud Hook and Rice Pot this past weekend, and I noticed in light, in light of, open quotes, "Pride Month," close quotes, all of the outside tables had, open quotes, "condoms," close quote, on them. That is imposing, open quotes, "adult," close quotes, subject in a public area that families interact with on a daily basis. This is, at the very least, crude. If movie theaters card teenagers before going into an R-rated movie because of adult content, then my three-year-old son should not have to see a condom on a table when I take him to lunch. I look forward to your response. Thanks. Next item for reading is from Mark Graham. No address indicated. As a resident of Duncanville, I want to address the topic of litter in the city and especially in our parks. I especially use Armstrong Park, as well as Harrington Park and Waterview Park. Armstrong Park is usually kept spotless, which makes sense due to its location downtown and next to City Hall. I walk my dog through the area regularly and enjoy it. But the fact is, I prefer taking my dog and exploring. Ten Mile Creek, as it flows through Harrington and Waterview Park. The creek, Ten Mile, should be a showcase in Duncanville. Sadly, as nice as it is, it often looks terrible due to trash in and along the creek. The best example of how the creek has become worse over the years is where the creek makes a turn behind Waterview Park and goes into Harrington Park. Where the creek runs through both parks, there is a limestone creek bed and some impressive limestone banks that should be enjoyed by more. As it is now, the attached photos show how the bend in the creek is so trash-filled it is awful to see. The ironic part to me is that this is an area that has been discussed for building a bridge between the two parks, Waterview and Harrington. While I question the need for the bridge, if it is built, visitors will get to see the eyesore of trash that continues to build there. Here is the rub. This trash is up and down all the creeks here. It is because our storm drains flush everything into the creeks. This creeks then fed into Ten Mile Creek each and every time we get rain that runs off the streets. Fix that, and a lot of the trash will be eliminated from Ten Mile and the area that is Waterview and Harrington Park. Those, too, open perenns, especially Harrington Park, closed perenns, could be a showcase here. Fishing, swimming, and just exploring the creek bed should be encouraged. Sadly, it isn't even discussed. The images of the trash are all from Harrington Park this past Sunday. The images of the kids fishing is from a few months ago. The trash pile is behind the two kids, who, despite the trash, were enjoying the creek as it should be. With regards, Mark Graham. And for the information of the audience, each of us have received the photographs from the individual. I do have some cards from individuals that are present that wish to address the City Council. Again, noting that your time limit is two minutes, and that time limit will be kept. And when you come up, please give us your name and address for the record. First card I have is from Tommy Rains. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. Do not wish to speak, but please record my support of the Duncanville Community Theater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rains, you're here, so...
Okay.
Do you want to say anything else?
I'm Tommy Rains.
I took 30 seconds, so you got a minute and a half. No, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Well, that caught me off guard. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm Tommy Rains. I live at 803 Prairie Smoke here in Duncanville. I've been involved with the community theater for, from day one, basically. When we worked, we sold cookies, we sold cupcakes, we did car washes, everything to start a theater in this city. And it has been an amazing addition to our community. And I'd just like to, you know, put it out there for consideration to renew the lease or rewrite, give us a 20-year lease instead of the five years that still left. So, I just, you know, would like to say that I support that. And I thank all of you for your support for Duncanville. It's a great city. I love it here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is from Michelle McClellan at 367 Lakeview Circle, and reading the whole card now. I do not wish to speak, but record my support of the Duncanville Community Theater The next card I have is from Ron Thompson. Mr. Thompson? Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ron Thompson. I'm at 603 Catherine Court here in Duncanville. And I want to start off, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you on things that are important. For me, my family's lived in Duncanville since 1975, and we've seen the quality of life ebb and flow and different kinds of energy. And what COVID has taught me, something we have and something we've lost during this time. I've been trying to work off my COVID-15. I've been taking a lot of walks. And one of the things that I know is, when you're walking, the city looks different than when you're driving. Ideally, it's dirty. I've started taking a little sack with me. I can put some trash as I go, but when I get to Lakeside Park, I walk from Presidential Estates to Lakeside Park. When I get to Lakeside Park, there's nothing there I want to pick up and put in my sack. So, we have a wonderful park system that I'm surprised, it's dirty to where it is. And the part that we've had because of COVID that we've lost this time is, I haven't been able to go to the Duncanville Theater. And it's wonderful. It's an anchor. It's been here for 30 years. And if you've lived in Dallas, you know there are very few theaters, professional and amateur, that have been around that long. And it needs to stay here. It's a cultural contribution. It's an educational contribution. And it's an economic contribution. We need to protect it, just like we protect our parks, because they're quality of life. And again, I appreciate you giving this opportunity. It's a not-often-fun job and thankless job, and we appreciate your contribution to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual who wishes to speak is Cynthia Dawn McCallum. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Dawn McCallum, and I live at 610 Walnut Street. Duncanville Community Theater opened the year that I was a senior at Duncanville High School. But it took until 2011, when I moved back to Duncanville as an adult, to get involved with a theater. And from the moment that I walked in the back door and met Rita K. Brewer, I had an instant group of friends. I had an extended family that means so much to me today. Even when I do shows at other theaters around the Dallas and Ellis County areas, people talk about Duncanville Community Theater. And it's, it's an organization that's touched so many lives. Countless volunteers, patrons, have, have walked through those doors, including some of you here this evening. And I just wanted to extend my thanks for the continued support of the Council, and hope sincerely that the lease is extended with possibly an extension of the lease to 20 years, so that Duncanville Community Theater can continue to build community and touch lives. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you. That concludes item number three, citizen comments, citizen input. Moving on to item number four, consent agenda. City Secretary, please read the consent agenda items.
4A, consider the minutes for the April 20th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. 4B, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of Professional Engineering Service Agreement PSA Number 21-028 for sanitary sewer evaluation surveys of Basin, WA for Burgess and Nyphal, Inc., for a total not to exceed $100,000. 4C, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchase for P-25 radio equipment and other related services for Motorola Solutions, Inc., using the Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract RA-05-18 with an estimated amount not to exceed $2,23,922. 4D, consider a resolution authorizing amendment to contract Number 20-097 for proprietary security officers for Duncanville Field House and a contract increase in the amount of $25,000 for a new annual amount not to exceed $75,000 with exclusive protection services LLC. 4E, consider a resolution authorizing payment for ancillary services to Jackson Energy in the amount of $195,729.77.
Thank you, Mr. McNabburnett.
Mayor, I'd like a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, or a second?
A second.
Have a second from Councilmember Harvey. Please vote. Thank you. Motion is passed unanimously. Moving on to item 5A, items for individual consideration. Let me preface what we have coming up. We have three public hearings. Now, the manner in which these are conducted is very simple. I will open the public hearing. Those, all, then 10 minutes will be given to anyone who wishes to speak in favor. We will then close that portion of the public hearing. I will then open the public hearing for those who wish to speak in opposition to the, to the item that we have. So, if you have, if there's several people that want to speak, but someone has already spoken, and they say this, you can affirm what someone has already said, rather than going through and saying it again, because you only have 10 minutes for each side, not each person having 10 minutes. So, I hope that's clear. So, I'll help you and guide you as we go through this again. So, the first item that we have is item 5A. Conduct a public hearing, 2021-13, for consideration and action regarding the request of James McGee, applicant representing Brandon Hollier, owner of Palio Partners, Duncanville One LLC, to include a specific use permit, SUP, to allow for a drive-through in Duncanville Estates, One Block A, Lot 16, approximately 0.7799 acres, more commonly known as 103 North Cedar Ridge Road, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. City Planner, Sky Tibado. Mr. Tibado.
Thank you, sir. First, we'll start off with a parcel map showing the area of request here at the northwest corner of Center Street and North Cedar Ridge Drive.
Move closer to the mic. You're not picking up. Well, thank you.
And here's an aerial of the property as well. Surrounding the, the subject property are similar commercial uses, retail, restaurants, some office-type uses and inline-lease spaces, both immediately to the west and across Cedar Ridge to the, to the east, with residential to the west, even further past the, the light, I'm sorry, the light, the local office retail zoning district, which is showing you this here, and zoning surrounded by single-family residential to the west, and similar zoning on the other corners as well. A little background information, how this relates to the comprehensive plan. So, this property is located within Opportunity Area Number Four, which is envisioned as maintaining its retail, commercial, and office uses while improving the aesthetics and design of those uses. This request involves re-establishing a drive-through in association with the restaurant following the renovation that you saw in your packet. The applicant is seeking approval to, to allow for the accessory use of drive-through at the subject property, which has technically been abandoned, as the tenant space has been vacant for more than six months. A little more on this. It was a former Chase Bank for that, that tenant, or the tenant space. And the drive-through that used to be there was for a bank and not a restaurant, so it would have to be kind of reassessed anyway. In regard to the tenant operations for the restaurant, to operate Monday through Thursday from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Friday and Saturday from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and Sunday from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And the applicant, applicant expects to employ between 15 and 20 employees at full operation. So, we have an exhibit that shows the site plan, so I'll show you that here in a second. But basically, this is saying the site is very overparked. With the new parking requirements that we have, actually, you know, we have a lot of reductions, actually, versus what it used to be. Restaurant used to be a 1 to 75 ratio, so one space per 75 square feet of floor area. Now, actually, for a limited seating restaurant, it's actually 1 to 400 ratio, so one space per 400 square feet of interior space. So, with this use, you really only need four parking spaces. And the subject property, this is kind of confusing, but you'll see this on the exhibit. The subject property has 25 full parking spaces on-site, and that's not counting the 19 spaces surrounding. You probably saw in the site plan, there's a property boundary. That boundary goes through about 19 parking spaces. Again, I'll show you that here in a second. Design improvements, I'm sure you're more aware than I was. This went through an economic development agreement to basically redevelop the, the structure itself. So, I have a slide here that shows the before and after of that. Basically, the, the site is redeveloping according to that agreement. Here's that slide showing the changes. At the top left, it shows you that former bank drive-through with the Chase Bank that used to be there, and what it looks like today. And on the bottom, just generally what it shows you, what it used to look like, and again, what it looks like today, following exactly as you, as you saw in the, in the economic development agreement. There's no proposed expansion to, expansion to existing structure, therefore, no threshold is being crossed. That requires new landscaping to conform to the current code. This is also in relation to screening as well. Any signage should follow the Chapter 16A, the General Code of Ordinances, for, for signage. And here is the, an exhibit of the site plan. Those spaces that I was talking about, kind of on the north and the west side, those are the 19 spaces that are bisected by the property boundary, but still, you know, in real life, accessible to people looking to, to go to one of these two tenant spaces. And we put a little graphic here to show you where that drive-through lane will be located. So, staff sent 15 notices out. And as of today, one response has been received in favor, and one has been received in opposition. Going back, I know the, the letter in opposition talked about some other things, but it was concern with parking. Again, the site is overparked, basically, as you can see in this exhibit. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0, with the following condition, that the drive-through shall be designed in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and that it maintains a safe ADA-compliant maneuvering scenario. That's not to, you know, suggest there's any kind of issue there. It's just to assure that, basically, the striping that you see on the southern end is done, at the end of the day, in a conforming manner to which our engineering inspectors will go out and make sure that is done. That's just to assure that it's done by an extra condition as part of this SUP request. And that's it for staff. And the, the owner and applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
For information in terms of how we will proceed from this point forward, we will be opening it up for a public hearing, and at the close of the public hearing, we'll then open it up for discussion by the City Council, and most likely, anybody that wishes to have any questions of the applicants, I see that they are here. So, that's the manner in which we will proceed. So, we will open those, the public, I'm sorry. So, we will open the portion of the public hearing in favor of those, and that will be opening at 7:46. So, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this special use permit, please come forward, state your name and address.
Mayor, traditionally, we allow the applicant to speak also. It's, I assume he's in favor of it, so...
I have, I have opted to have the applicant speak after we have the public hearing. By doing so, it allows the applicant to understand any comments made by our citizens to address those when he comes up. Seeing no one coming forward to speak in favor, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor of closing the public hea, in favor portion of the public hearing, please vote. Thank you. Public hearing is closed at 7:47. The in-favor portion of the public hearing is closed at 7:47. We'll now open the opposition portion of the public hearing at 7:47. All those who wish to speak in opposition to the special use permit, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion to, to close, and a second to close the opposition portion of the public hearing. All in favor, please vote. Unanimously closing the public hearing at 7:48. The opposition portion at 7:48. Okay. With that, now open up the item to discussion by the City Council members. Any City Council member which has have questions, or of Mr. Tibado, or of the applicant?
I'd like, I'd like the applicant to speak first, Mayor.
Mr. Tibado, would you please introduce Mr. James McGee?
I'm James. I'm actually the owner. I was gonna let my father do the speaking. He was more prepared to speak than me.
Can you move closer? We can barely hear you.
I said I was prepared to let my father speak. Brandon McGee, he's a bit more prepared than me. I am the actual owner, but I was prepared to let my father speak. So, if you guys have any questions, he'll be happy to answer that for you.
Good evening. As you said, I'm Brandon McGee. I'm his father. Proud to say I work for my son. Retired naval officer, 27 years serving the country. Now, I work for this guy, James McGee, the owner and founder of Candy Shack Daggers. James McGee, the owner and founder of Candy Shack Dacres. Hardest job in America. So basically, here's Candy Shack Dacres, kind of give you guys an insight into who we are and what we are. We're basically a family or in a daiquiri shop, a restaurant concept where it's fun, it's daiquiris done different, it's a part in your cup. It's not the traditional alcohol-type based environment. It's about food, it's about big games, it's about bright colors. Been around about five years. Houston-based company, we have five stores in Houston, just opened our second DFW area store in Dallas, have a store in Arlington, it's been around for about three years, and now we're looking to come to Duncanville. Here's a sample of just some of our food items. We have a pretty diverse food menu. It's typically all southern-style food, fried catfish, shrimp. We do some sometimes, excuse me, sometimes specialty items, southwest chicken egg rolls, having a hard time getting chicken wings and southwest chicken egg rolls, like everybody else, there's a chicken shortage, it's hitting us too. Here's a look at some of our daiquiris. We have some very unique-looking daiquiris, some very unique flavors. We've got like a cookies and cream you see up there, we have very bright vibrant colors. You see some of our large games that we have. It's a fun-filled family environment, not the typical dark, not inviting daiquiri shop. Any questions?
Mr. Coates.
Could you go back a slide?
Yes, sir.
So I'm assuming that's a non-alcoholic daiquiri that that child is.
Absolutely. So what we typically have is, we got about ten standard flavors. We always have, we have twelve typical barrels in all of our stores, ten standard flavors that are alcohol-based flavors. We always carry one virgin flavor and then we carry one freestyle flavor.
Okay. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, mayor. I understand that you all were inspired by, inspired by visiting family in New Orleans?
Yes, sir.
What what part of New Orleans?
So my mother had a boyfriend and his mother, he's actually from New Orleans, from Fisher and his his mother lives in Morello. So she still dates him, so we visit quite frequently.
Fisher project?
Yeah, the, yeah, Fisher, and his mother lives in Morello, yes.
Oh, okay.
I think that Fisher is no longer there, though.
Oh, okay, all right. I I ask because I'm originally from New Orleans.
Okay, cool. I believe that's all on the West Bank, if I said it correctly. I'm not very familiar.
Yeah, that's that's what I was thinking. Fisher's on, Fisher's on the West Bank, Morello's on the West Bank. And also, the Harvey Tunnel is is on the West Bank, for those of you that are not aware of that. So just a little FYI.
So what part of New Orleans are you from?
Calton, Pigeont Town.
Okay.
And those of us not from New Orleans have no idea what you're talking about.
I am, I'm actually, I'm actually born and raised in Virginia Beach. My mother also is retired Navy, so with both naval parents, I grew up in Virginia.
All right. Well, I just want to say that I'm, I am very supportive of what you all are attempting to do. I guess I'm gonna call that part of Duncanville Little Louisiana, because you already got Thibodeau's and you've got Pelican House, and now you all are gonna come, and so if I'm not at home, I guess I'll be somewhere around there. So thank you all for coming, welcome to Duncanville.
Thank you.
Understanding that what we have before us is, don't go away, don't go away, don't go away. Understand that what we have before us is a special use permit for a drive-through.
Yes, sir.
That it's, it's not an issue for us in terms of bringing the business to us. So you have other locations within the metroplex.
Yes, sir.
And we have seen on the graphic where the drive-through is supposed to, or is intended to go, which used to be the drive-through for the bank itself, so that that's, that's a good positive indication. However, what we, as a society, have experienced with COVID is many, many people who used to want to dine in are now strictly drive-through people. And it was addressed in the information here in terms of stacking. So when we look at the drive-through, could you please tell us what percentage of business at your other locations is drive-through and how you anticipate that percentage of drive-through being accommodated in the space that we have here at this location?
That's a good question. Percentage-wise, honestly, I would, I would probably say thirty to forty percent is is drive-through. We have a lot of people that come in because we have games and stuff on the table, so we do like Jumbo Jenga, Jumbo Connect Four. We put like family friend, family-friendly games and stuff on the table, so a lot of people still do come in and sit down and dine. More people are starting to come back out now that people have gotten vaccinated and they're more comfortable coming back out. So we're, we're seeing, you know, more people come in and dine and, and, you know, start to enjoy themselves more like they did in the past.
I would say one thing about us as well is even though we have the drive-through there, it's kind of hard to get the full candy shack experience going to the drive-through. Our servers and our call mixologists, mixologists for a reason, they take the time to actually get customer input and create their own special drink for that particular customer, which is something that's hard to do in a drive-through. You don't get a chance to actually see all the candy, see all the add-ons that we have, see the different flavors, taste the flavors. So we encourage customers to actually come inside and actually interact with our mixologists. So we tend to bring people in.
Okay, all right. I see Mr. Concheras.
Excuse me. My first question is really for Mr. Thibodeau. That is, what is the current requirement for a restaurant serving alcohol as to the food alcohol ratio sales?
Yeah, this business won't, it won't pass the, or it's not intended to pass the seventy-five percent threshold that would be, you know, considered a bar. This is more of a mixed beverage permit-type activity, and that's about fifty percent, right? Less than fifty percent alcohol sales, something like that?
So, so I'll answer that question. We do have about, we have more than fifty percent food sales, but we do not carry a mixed beverage license. We carry what's called a beer and wine license. So if you guys are familiar with the alcohol licenses, it's, we, we don't serve, we actually don't serve beer at all. We only, only alcoholic beverages we do serve is the daiquiris. But we don't serve any hard liquor whatsoever, no tequila, no vodka, nothing like that.
Okay, but those alcoholic-based drunk, based drinks that you have?
Yes, sir.
They can be carried out of the store?
Yes, sir, they can.
Okay. And also, can they be delivered through the drive-through?
Yes, sir. So you can come to the drive-through and purchase them as well.
Okay, so if I was going through and ordering those same rules applying to food alcohol ratios, can I just buy daiquiris, new food?
Yes, sir, so you can. So they take a look at the overall total sales, not, so you may just come get a daiquiri, someone may just come get food, so they look at the overall sales, not just the individual sales per person. So you, if you wanted to just come purchase a daiquiri, you could.
Sure. I understand a few years ago, and it may have changed, the state did away with the regulation labeling those drinks to warn people not to open them in the parking lots or in the vehicle. Do you know if that still applies? Are you having to put labels on those drinks?
No, sir, we're not required to put labels on them.
Okay.
But we are required to seal, we do seal the drinks before they are taken.
Okay. Well, I'll just tell you on this, on this basis, I won't be able to vote for this drive-through. Simply on the basis, I know you can go around to convenience stores and we've all seen these barrels filled with ice and these large beers. I don't know how anybody drinks them, they're so big, but, and they're usually accompanied with sacks to carry them in. So we all know somebody can go to a convenience store and very easily pick those up, get in their car, open them up and drive. But to have a drive-through where you can go through and simply buy daiquiris, I think the incentive for somebody buying a daiquiri is to drink it before everything melts. And therefore, I'm inclined to think that the majority, a significant number of customers will be drinking those alcoholic beverages while they're driving. So for that matter, if if the drive-through did not include that and you just had it at the restaurant, I've got no problem with that. But the fact that you explained that you can just go through and get the alcohol drink and drive away, I would have to vote against that.
I would, I would like to add that we do have a lot, most of our locations are drive-throughs, and we have not had any issues in the almost now six years that I've been operating.
Mr. Cooks.
Yes. First of all, thank you for being here today, we really appreciate it. And I know that the governor, I think, has either signed the bill or signed the bill, unfortunately, that you can get alcoholic beverages to go. So that's gonna be legally the way, regardless of where you go at this point, whether we agree with it or not. But I do want to ask about your drive-through customer service, and would you share with me anything about how you, how it's worked in the past and your customer service through your drive-through?
We have a typical drive-through menu board that you can view when you come through, I guess, like McDonald's or anywhere else. You're able to order from the menu board if you want to order food. We have food items. All of our food items are fried, so they're made very quickly. I think the longest time it takes to make any one of those items is three minutes. So we do serve food through the drive-through. We also serve crawfish during crawfish season, which is about to wrap up at this point, but we serve crawfish, so you're able to order crawfish and you're able to order food as well as a daiquiri. So we take your order, we package everything up, seal it and hand it out the door, hand it out the window to you. So if you order food, we'll put it in the container, hand it out in the bag. As well as a daiquiri, you order your daiquiri, we also hand that out in the bag. We seal it and we hand it out to you in a bag.
You know, speaking of that, where, I don't know if we saw the spot where the speaker is gonna be located in the drive-through. Did we miss, did I miss that?
So, so it's, it's not on here, not on there, but we would probably put it toward the, the tail end of the building. If you look at the bottom, the bottom left end of the building is probably where we would place the speaker.
Okay. All right, and then, and of course, this is not part of the drive-through question, but you mentioned everything is fried, so if you ever have, have an opportunity to have anything healthy, for it's baked or grilled, we'll encourage that as well. Thank you very much for being here.
All right.
Thank you. Seem no further comments. The chair will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Coates.
Just real quick, sorry. So would you describe this as a restaurant that sells daiquiris? Because I know in the, the introduction we got, he kept saying restaurant, restaurant, restaurant. Or would you say it's a daiquiri? Because in the description here, it's a daiquiri shop, daiquiri plus food, so how would you describe it?
I would describe it more of a restaurant that sells daiquiris. Our food sales honestly have surprised me. We only have one location that sells only daiquiris, and that's in Houston. That was the first location I opened. Since then, we've added the food to the second location, and we've noticed that so many people, they want to eat food, so the sales went up exponentially overall in general because of the food. So we kept the food, and it's just grown great popularity. I guess the, the draw probably would be the daiquiris, but the food sales are phenomenal. The food actually costs more than the daiquiris anyway, so like that daiquiri that you're looking at costs six dollars. The food items are about anywhere from, if you order maybe like egg rolls, they're eight dollars, but anywhere from like eight to to twelve dollars for the food item. So we sell way more food than we do, because typically people, let's say if you come through and you have your kids with you, you may get, you know, you may get a daiquiri for yourself, you may get a virgin daiquiri for the kids, and then you order a whole bunch of food for the family. So that's typically the trend that we're seeing in terms of, in terms of the restaurant. So we definitely sell more food for sure. It's more of a restaurant that sells daiquiris.
Now, how would, not having the the drive-through impact just the overall business?
Honestly, I think it would impact us probably about twenty to thirty percent, because we noticing the ones that, for the ones that don't have the drive-through, it affects us about twenty to thirty percent in sales. Especially with the whole COVID thing happening, everybody wants to, you know, not get out or, I wouldn't even blame it on COVID, I think people just don't want to get out the car in general. Like, I, when I go to McDonald's, I just go through the drive-through.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coates, for bringing home the fact that we are looking at an SUP for a drive-through, not the fact of what this restaurant is all about. I see Mr. Concheras has, he lit up again. Mr. Concheras?
Yes. To Mr. Cook's remark, I understand that the, the drive-through daiquiri business is, is, is allowed in the state, also daiquiris only. And I also know, maybe I'm dating myself, the old Beer Barns, do we still have Beer Barns?
We actually have one in Houston, right around the corner from one of our places.
So I understand we have those things. To follow up on the question I asked you earlier, if two people pulled up at your location and ordered four daiquiris in their vehicles, where do you cut them off at?
So we actually have a, a two, a two, two-drink minimum, so there is a minimum, and you hit it spot on. So if someone tried to come and order, let's say, ten, we would not sell them to them. We only two drinks per person. Like, if, if maximum, yeah, maximum to, to go. So I mean, let's say if your wife were to come through and pick up a drink for you and her, we would sell it, but if she tried to come through and order, you know, it's just her and she tried to purchase six daiquiris, we wouldn't even sell it to her.
Oh, so you know my wife. Okay, okay. Thank you for clearing that up, I appreciate it.
All right, I, okay, Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, mayor. I, I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I accept the motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second for Mr. Harvey. City council, please vote. The motion for an SUP is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you guys' time.
And we welcome a new business to the city of Duncanville. New Orleans? We're gonna talk about New Orleans anymore? Okay. I've gotta get my map out if we are, okay. Item five B, conduct a public hearing, perends twenty twenty-one dash one four, for consideration and action regarding the request of Jared Adams, applicant representing Tom Rockwell, owner of CNCS Properties LLC, to include a specific use permit SUP to allow for auto repair and services major on Duncanville Industrial District Sixth installment, Block G, Lot Forty-Eight, approximately zero point five three sixty-eight acres, more commonly known as seven zero three Big Stone Gap Road, Duncanville, Texas, Dallas County, Texas. Mr. Thibodeau, floor is yours again, sir.
Thank you, mayor and council. This map is showing you the area of requests, roughly at the northwest corner of Big Stone Gap in Gemini. Here's an aerial of the property. You can see it's surrounded by similar uses, one caveat, immediately to the west, you'll see this SUP layer. This is for a beauty school that actually has a SUP on the property, I'm sure you're all familiar with, that has a renewal type of condition on their, on their SUP. So aside from that, it's surrounded pretty much by like uses. In regard to the comprehensive plan, the subject property is in opportunity area number three, and I won't read this verbatim. Basically, the last bullet kind of points to what we're thinking here. The area is envisioned as remaining the light, the city's light industrial, heavier commercial and office park hub would consider this a heavier commercial-type use. This request is associated with co-compliance case CE twenty dash zero five six zero five. The case was open in late December twenty twenty when a co-compliance officer discovered unpermitted auto sales and repair activity in Suites A and B of the subject property. The other uses associated with the applicant's business, auto dealership, inside-only and outside storage are permitted by right, and the outside storage must conform to these zoning ordinance. In regard to parking, a lot of information really to describe the sixteen parking spaces that are available up front, they are conforming. I'll show you what that looks like. These are the parking spaces in front of the building, kind of oriented on the south side. And, you know, gonna break it from this, I'd really like to thank the applicant from, for just working with staff. We had a, some visits on the site and walked around, kind of got to know his business on the inside and really walked the outside to explain kind of what's going on with these non-conforming spaces, because they were done at a, at a point in the past, you know, and they thought maybe they were conforming at one point in time, the property owner and the tenant. So I kind of described what was going on, showed him the portions of the zoning ordinance where that is in conflict, for, for him to understand why we're making this, this recommendation to remove these non-conforming parking spaces. At the end of the day, you know, we want a conforming, as close as conforming properties we can, knowing the, the history of the property and kind of where it's at and how it's been over the decades. The applicant's not proposing any additions or modifications of the existing structure or parking area, aside from working with staff to remove the non-conforming parking, and the applicant is proposing to screen any outside storage to be in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and there's no landscaping improvements associated with this request, there is no proposed addition to the structure. Here's a site plan exhibit provided by the owner, just kind of showing you the site, mainly pointing to the sixteen parking spaces in front. The fourteen that you see, the call, really just accounts for the parking spots that are not handicap accessible, the extra two equalling sixteen are on the, on the far east Twelve notices were sent by staff, and as of this writing, three responses have been received, two in favor and one in opposition. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the S U P request by a vote of 5 to 0, subject to the following condition: Outside storage shall be in conformance to the zoning ordinance, and the non-conforming parking stalls that I showed you on the exhibit be removed. And just wanted to provide a note that the commission did not recommend a condition regarding timelines or other trigger events associated with the S U P, which council may want to consider in its final decision. And the applicant is here to make a presentation when you're ready for him.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, using the same protocols that we had in the public hearing for the previous item, we will use those same protocols in this one. Opening the public hearing in favor of this S U P at 8:10. Any individual who wishes to speak in favor of this S U P, please, please come forward. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close the in-favor portion of the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, we have a motion to close and a second. Please vote. Thank you. The in-favor portion of the public hearing is closed at 8:11. We'll now open the opposition portion of the public hearing at 8:11. Any individual who wishes to speak in opposition of this S U P, please come forward. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close the opposition portion of the public hearing.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close and we have a second. Please vote. Thank you. The motion to close is approved, and we will close at 8:12. I'll now open the, this portion of our agenda item to discussion by city council. Any comments by council members? Mr. Cooks?
Yes, Mr. Thibodeau, so let me make sure I understand this. So this S U P is for parking and not the building itself, is that correct?
No, it's actually the use for automotive repair, major. That was the business that was discovered, that was, did not have a C O associated with it at any point in time. If you read through used car dealerships or auto dealerships inside only, it, the definition does talk about incidental auto service and repair. However, when it was discovered, it was more, the activity of auto services and repair wasn't necessarily incidental. It was a pretty large portion of the business. From what I understand, folks that aren't purchasing vehicles potentially from the applicant can come in and receive services to their vehicle. So it is, it's not like you buy your car from, you know, Cadillac dealership or something, and you take it there for service and repairs. Not necessarily like that. So this request is for a major automotive repair. Should it be approved, they'd be allowed to continue that activity.
Is it up to code for us, the sprinklers?
I'll have to, I believe we're working with that. I'll let the applicant answer that question, and I think he's had some conversations in the past with fire.
Okay, I'll wait on the applicant to answer then. Can he answer now? You're going to wait?
Yeah, can you answer the question now?
Can you come up?
How are y'all doing? Jared Adams. Yeah, the property did not have, does not have a sprinkler system. I'm under the impression it is not required for the things that I do in that position, or for the work that I do. Now, if I need to, I guess other discussions we can have in making sure we get that, you know, installed if needed. But at this time, it's not a sprinkler system in there.
Okay, Mr. Thibodeau, can you answer that? Have you looked into, seen if it requires a sprinkler system for the safety of others?
Yeah, that would be kind of the next step to get in that conversation in more detail. Knowing that he can do, if he can do the use, then what kind of steps does he need to take with that proposed use? Sure, with the use that is now allowed. So that would be kind of the next step of inspecting the building and seeing what he needs to provide in that regard.
So if we approve this, and then you inspected and know that it does need a sprinkler system, then what? What's the next step?
I'll have to address it before the C O for the auto repairs business is approved.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good question. Mr. Contreras?
Mr. Thibodeau, in the title on the staff report, it says auto repair and services. And you just mentioned that what we're here for is for auto repair. But yet down in the project scope, on that same staff report, it says, "The code officer discovered unpermitted automotive sales."
Yeah, I think that goes back to a change of ownership. Iken Auto dates back to 2018. What we've been talking about when we visit onsite is to really focus on doing an automotive inside-only type use. If you go back to 2018, there was a C O that was approved for that use. Different zoning ordinance, different classification.
Different owner?
Different owner, I believe. Did you take it over at some point between 2018 and now? Because it's been under Iken Auto this entire time.
Well, what originally happened, we had another dealer at that location. That dealer had since moved on. But it was two dealers when we first applied for the original C O that was on the C O to operate out of that location. Now it's just sold to me as a C O, as a person operating out of that location.
Okay, so I trust that the C O's been adjusted to reflect the ownership. Okay, so right now, it's inside sales only, so there's no cars for display outside?
That's right. And we walked through the property to really discuss those items and how to handle that business. You know, the site is small, they've got to have people, you know, cars dropped off and staged momentarily. But we kind of talked about how to do that and basically keep, you know, perceived negative activities from being, you know, on the outside of the structure, basically. So when you drive by, it looks like a quiet, conforming type business.
All right, thank you.
I see Mr. Coates again, please.
Yes, sir. This question's for Mr. Thibodeau. Just looking at the comprehensive plan, and that being Opportunity Area 3, could you define, kind of explain to us a little bit, where it says the area is envisioned as remaining the city's light industrial, heavier, commercial and office park hub? So can you give us a little bit more definition on those, that part of the vision?
Sure, sure. Really, I think a lot of it has to do with just the established area. You know, when you drive through it, you feel like you're in a heavy commercial, industrial type area. I think that's what this is saying, you know, it's not bound by expressways like you would normally find with these kind of areas. Of course, you know, the railroad was there and probably used in tandem for that area back when that was more of a normal thing. But really, I think the, what the comp plan is telling us is, you know, it's there. Any kind of redevelopment is going to be a very large-scale type situation. It's not really one of those areas that you would really expect to redevelop parcel to parcel like you would see in other areas, more, you know, lighter, commercial, retail type areas. It's kind of an established, heavy, heavy commercial, industrial type area in town that's been there for some time.
So does auto, auto repair and services, does that fall into the category?
I would definitely classify that as a heavier commercial type use. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments by council, the chair will entertain a motion to approve this S U P. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Maybe Mr. McNabb, please vote. The motion is approved. Thank you. Moving on to item 5C, conduct a public hearing, perenns 2021-15, close perenns for consideration and action regarding the request of Jessica Rice, applicant representing Cedar Hill Holding LLC, owner, requesting a specific use permit, S U P, to allow for bus and truck storage and rental and hauling on Crestview Block C, lots 5 and 6, approximately 0.97 acres, more commonly known as 617 East Highway 67, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Again, Mr. Thibodeau, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a map of the area request. And here's an aerial, surrounded by similar uses, zone in the commercial district. Same thing across 67 to the, call it south and east, southeast. Similar types of uses within the commercial district as well. Here's the zoning as well. Actually, there's General Office Retail across the street, apologize about that. All right, in regard to the comprehensive plan, the subject property is located within Area, Opportunity Area Number 1. This plan recognizes that remaining interstate frontage is limited and provides a strategic goal to identify non-conforming properties and work with the property owners to relocate or bring the property into conformance. This request involves such a property that has made site improvements, certain site improvements working towards compliance. Again, the applicant is seeking for approval to allow for bus and truck storage and rental and hauling, subject property. And the proposed business is intended to provide minor automotive repair and service, services and U-Haul storage and rental on the property. Additionally, courtesy of off-site hauling services, it tend to be provided. At 1,435 square feet, the site requires six parking spaces, kind of divided between the uses, which there are perfectly six spaces actually in front of the building as it exists today. There's no proposed expansion or additional site improvements associated with the request. Therefore, there are no building, any kind of additional requirements to meet in regard to landscaping or anything like that. Outside storage is proposed to be in conformance with the zoning ordinance as well. Again, no landscaping improvements are required due to no proposed expansion or anything to the structure. Here's an aerial showing, kind of zoomed into the existing site. You can see the apron that was recently poured, fairly recently poured. You see the six available parking spaces on the front. 12 notices were sent to the public. As of today, no responses have been received by staff. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the S U P by a vote of 5 to 0, subject to the following: Outside storage shall be in conformance to the zoning ordinance. Any onsite outside storage of towed vehicles associated with the use of hauling is prohibited. Touch on that a little bit more. The applicant is proposing to have a, basically a record truck in the outside storage area with the U-Haul trucks as well. But any car that the record truck goes out and services will only go to the point that the car is not able to function and take it to another location where they'll do repairs or stage it or what they need to do. No cars in association with the record service with the hauling use will be brought to the property for storage of any kind, temporary or any kind. And continuation of the S U P until change of ownership or use was a condition that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended as well. And the applicant is here to answer any questions she might have.
Thank you for that. Okay, continuing on with the existing protocol for public hearing, we now open the public hearing for those who wish to speak in favor of this S U P. Oh, sorry, 8:22. Seeing no one approaching, the chair will entertain a motion to close the in-favor portion of the public hearing. We have a motion and a second to close the in-favor portion of the public hearing. Please vote. Thank you. Close at 8:23. Moving on to the opposition portion of the public hearing, we will open the public hearing in opposition at 8:23. All individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this S U P, please come forward. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close the opposition portion of the public hearing.
Motion.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor? Thank you. The opposition portion of the public hearing is closed at 8:23 as well. With the closure of the public hearing portion of the S U P, we'll now open the item to discussion by the city council members, as they may wish. I see Mr. Contreras.
Mr. Thibodeau, could you go back to the survey plat?
I'm sorry?
Could you go back to the survey plat?
The survey plat?
It was in our packet.
Yeah.
Is it not on here? Okay. Well, based on the aerial then, can you pull the aerial up?
Sure, here, let me get the zoom in, actually.
Yeah, that'll do. Where is the required screening fence going to be located?
The required screening fence, you can see there's one right there in existence. To conform this, we need a, you could do a variety of options, and that's something we'll do as we get to the actual permitting of the fence. It could be a metal fence, a wrought iron fence. This being commercial, really, the thing is you can't really see it. You're not allowed to see it from the right of way. So there would be, you know, some kind of mechanism that goes. If it is an open fence, like a wrought iron or something, it'll have a, you know, appropriate commercial grade, you know, screening device and netting of some kind like that. So that would be the requirement as it relates to screening of the outside storage area.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooks?
Yeah, Mr. Thibodeau, help me out with the drawing for just a second. So I can see this facility right off of 67 going that north? Going south?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to, what's next to it? What's close, what other businesses?
Oh, Big Brothers Muffler and Radiator Shop immediately to the south.
It used to be that boat repair facility.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you. All right, that's all I have, thank you. And this is, but I can see it really clearly off of 67, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
I can see the facility is passing south on 67 without a problem.
That's right, yes.
All right.
But no more boats?
That's not a proposed use, sir.
No, the boat, the boat repair shop is out of business.
Yeah, I mean, all the stored boats are gone.
Yes, they are gone.
They've been there a long time.
I just want to be careful of what we can see passing on 67, and that's why I'm asking those types of questions.
I understand.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, six to eight screening, I can verify that if you'd like, but yeah, six to eight feet. I believe it might be eight feet, actually. With this being commercial, you have to block the screening with that netting device of the commercial grade.
Mr. Coates?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just kind of go along with what Mark was asking, just about visibility. Because comprehensive plan, so Opportunity Area Number 1, right, is what we're talking about. And that's identified as a primary corridor going through Duncanville. And so, you know, aesthetics are important there. And so I guess what, as far, right now, that whole strip, you know, needs a lot of work. I'm sure no one would disagree with that. So as far as this, you know, what's going to be done to make sure that it, you know, is consistent with that part of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, you know, aesthetics, of course, if a property redevelops, we're going to really focus on that kind of stuff. This being a property that, you know, we're using existing conditions, working with text dot restraints on the frontage, I'm sure you noticed that on the aerial that you saw. You know, this kind of speaks to identifying properties and work with property owners to relocate or bring the property into conformance to the best of our ability. I think this falls into that category, the aesthetic. And that, of course, we're going to, you know, want to have that happen. But we're really going to focus on that in situations where we're redeveloping, demolishing structures or modifying existing structures, that kind of thing. That's really what we'll hone in on in that regard at that time.
And then in the description, it says the proposed use of this property is an intermediate use until the property achieves conformance with the vision of Opportunity Area Number 1. So can you kind of speak toward intermediate use?
That's leading towards complete redevelopment. So, you know, you want the property to sit, be vacant, do you want it to be fully redeveloped, kind of, or something in the intermediate? Do you want it to be working towards conformance and being utilized with the use like this, that kind of thing?
Thank you.
A question in terms of the vis- Looks like we've just lost power up here for something. In terms of the visibility, which is going to the points that have been made, and this as a red, it also includes the rental of U-Hauls. U-Haul trailers and trucks, I believe. So with that, and knowing how other dealers of U-Haul equipment display themselves, those things are pretty well lined up and give a good visible effect. So it, Janessa, Ms. Rice, as the applicant, could you address for us, please, in terms of, as you've heard, we have some concerns about the visibility coming down Highway 67 and on the frontage road itself. So we, as Mr. Coates has said, there are some that are already there that we can't account for in terms of how good they look or not so good. Could you tell us, please, what you would like to do, intend to do, to give your location some good appearance as individuals drive down 67 or the frontage road?
We're definitely willing to-
Microphone, yeah.
I didn't know any of that.
There you go, yeah.
Janessa Rice, and I'm at 39670 LBJ Dallas. I'm actually representing the landlord of this property that will be a tenant, that will be using the S U P. So what the tenant, the tenant is currently actively doing business in your city already and has been for over 20 years. He's just wanting to relocate to this location. And so we applied for the special use permit on his behalf.
Where is that business right now?
He is located currently at 1305 West Main- He is located currently at thirteen zero five West Main Street.
North Main Street.
Is it north main? Okay, I'm sorry, it is north.
Oh, that's the U-Haul propane, that's the U-Haul propane dealer.
Yes, sir. It's Berry's Automotive?
No. It's further up. It's almost all the way to Redbird Lane.
Oh, that way up there?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that one I know as well. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And so he's just wanting to relocate here and sign a, a long-term lease with us. As far as the, the landlord of the property, we've already made major concessions. We've poured the apron as asked by the city. We're willing to do fencing, whatever it is that we need to do to try to conform so that this man can do business and continue to be a viable part of the city.
Okay. Mr. Contreras, I see your, your lid back up again, or did you not?
No.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right, seeing no further discussion by city council members, the chair will entertain a motion to approve this S U P.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second by Mr. McNabb. Please vote. Motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Mr. Contreras wants to-
I'm sorry?
I was hitting the wrong button.
You hit the wrong button?
Mr. Koontz and Mr. Cooks, who are against, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, there's, there's, there's the clean slate right there.
There it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Motion is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, I do want to thank council in going through these S U Ps that we've just gone through for some very intuitive questions, good questions, and that's what we're here for, is to, you know, bring those things to light and to let both the applicant and our citizens know that we do have concerns and how those are viewed for the best portion, best use of our city, our property. So thank you, council, for those, for those questions. Moving on to item five D, consider resolution approving the terms and conditions of a renewal lease by and between the City of Duncanville and the Duncanville Community Theater, a Texas nonprofit corporation, providing for terms and conditions of a lease. Mr. Gus Garcia, our new economic development, this is your first time before us?
Second time, mayor.
Yeah. Second time. Okay.
I'll make it first.
Does that call a reset, does that call a reset button?
Okay. Get no respect. Okay. Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, Augustine Gus Garcia, economic development director of the City of Duncanville. Before you today is a resolution approving the lease renewal for the Duncanville Community Theater. The Duncanville Community Theater signed a ten-year lease in two thousand and six with two five-year renewals. As part of that lease, the D C T Duncanville Community Theater was required to provide at least three hundred K in capital improvements, which they did. Those documents are attached in your agenda for any questions you may have. Before you's a resolution approving the lease renewal for the Duncanville Community Theater, staff is recommending approval of resolution of the terms and conditions of lease renewal between the City of Duncanville and the D C T provided in item five D of your That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all I have. We are in full support of the lease renewal.
And that is the terms of what, Mr. Garcia?
It's a five-year renewal. The council can enter into negotiations and modify the lease as they so choose without the penalty. The first renewal of five years, there would have been a penalty of a hundred and fifty thousand had they not, had you not renewed. At this point in time, there does, there does appear to be a possible penalty depending on the negotiations, but that would be something that the city attorney would have to address because there may be possible exposure in that regard.
Okay. I have a question for the city attorney. We have had, and we have heard individuals come forward speaking to a lease of twenty years versus the five years that's being proposed by the city. Not being totally versed in the legal aspects of that, I'm not sure that there is a legal provision to allow a twenty-year lease on this particular property. Could you please enlighten us or educate us on that, please?
Yeah, when a lease term approaches that length of time, it's tantamount to-
Can barely hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. I said, when a lease term approaches twenty years, it, it approaches the position of being almost like a conveyance of actual ownership of the property. We've always recommended to you that a lease should not extend beyond ten years. That's why this lease is structured the way it was with a ten-year initial term and a five-year renewal. If you undertake or want to consider additional time, I think that you owe it to yourselves to do a little more negotiation than trying to do it from a dais this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that input. I see Mr. Harvey.
So just to reiterate, my question is, have we satisfied all the repayment obligations under the lease as presented to us in the packet?
Councilman Harvey, are you referring to the satisfac-, the satisfaction of the lease renewal based on negotiations or the satisfaction of the loan that was paid to the D C T and their repayment to the city?
You can answer a question with a question.
He's clarifying your question.
Oh, okay. So, well, let me answer it this way.
So, 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 so let's say, for example, that we decide not to extend the lease for another five years. What would happen?
It's my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, that we may have exposure and have to repay in addition a hundred and fifty thousand of the original three hundred thousand that the Duncanville Community Theater provided in capital improvements to the facility if you do not renew. If you renew with negotiations, you potentially would be renewing with new provisions, and that may not trigger the hundred and fifty thousand penalty for part of the capital improvements that the D C T provided. But that would be a question for the attorney to address. I don't want to advise this council on any legal matters.
Would you like to address that, Attorney Hager?
If you wanted me to give legal advice to you in front of the general public, I'd be happy to, but that's up to you all.
I prefer not to have legal advice, given to me at this time, despite my personal inclination and expression to do so.
Mayor, mayor and council, let me say, you have an item on your agenda. If you need and want legal advice about any matter that's posted on the agenda, you have the absolute right to ask the recess and do closed executive session to give you legal advice.
Then I'd like for us to go into closed executive session and get legal advice.
Second.
Could I ask my question?
Mr. Contreras, before we do this, oh, yes.
Okay. Mine's just for clarity. On the resolution itself, and this is the proposed resolution, you state that it's for-
Five years.
It renews the lease dated the sixteenth of August twenty-sixth for an additional five-year term expiring on August first, two thousand and twenty-six, and that such renewal will be under the same terms and conditions as the primary lease as set forth in exhibit A. And exhibit A says the lease will be for a period of ten years, the primary term commencing on the effective date thereof, and may be renewed for two successive additional five-year terms. The connection between the two, I've lost.
Mayor, if you're going to ask legal advice, one, I think you had to ask me, not Gus, and that's what you're asking to interpret a lease. So if you want legal advice on that, you really need to direct that question to me.
Let's, let's address that in closed executive session, then.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooks.
I do, I do have one question I don't think that we can answer. So all of the improvement was completed, it looks like in sixteen?
Yes, it was actually, the requirement was to provide three hundred thousand in capital improvements. I believe they provided five hundred thousand.
Okay. And so, in looking at all of the itemized list, do we go through and make sure that there was no liens or anything on the property, or we would know if there's any liens on the property? Is that still a legal question to attorney?
Well, you know, the consequences of the lien would be a legal question, but as far as I know, there's no liens on the property because it's city-owned and you can't file a lien against city-owned property.
So all of the, so all of the work-
So if there was a lien, it's void.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
At this time, we will recess city council at eight forty. We are officially reconvening city council. The timestamp is nine oh five. And we have closed executive session to seek advice from city attorney, legal advice from the city attorney concerning city attorney concerning item five D. Before proceeding, I want to clarify to everyone present, what is before us as a council to consider is renewing the second five-year lease renewal of a lease that expires in two thousand and twenty-six. So with that, we have before us, the chair will accept a motion to approve the renewal of a five-year lease with the Duncanville Community Theater as proposed in the resolution.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion. We approve it.
We have a motion to approve. There's a second.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Vera Cruz. Council, please vote. Motion is approved. Thank you. Item five E, taking any necessary action as a result of executive session, there is no action to take. Moving on to item six, staff and board reports, receive the economic development department quarterly report. Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, mayor and council, Augustine Garcia with the Duncanville Community Economic Development Corporation. As the council is aware, the D C E D C has been through a transition, being without a director in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. Activity for the corporation was limited in the absence of a director. Looking at the last report, I wanted to give a refresh on the last items that were being worked on. Not to say the D C was not active, because they definitely were, but had been more in a supportive role for the city rather than independent roles such as searching, attracting, or aggressively seeking new development for the city of Duncanville. It was a bit of a juggling act. As you know, we lost our director in December. They did provide some contract work, and we had our coordinator, who, as you well know, has resigned from the position as well. So we had a bit of a continuity gap. That was approximately ten years of service to the City of Duncanville. So first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one was more, again, more in a supportive role. So that's what I'm bringing or presenting to you today is the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. But what I wanted to do was provide a little bit of a refresh on what was taking place end of two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-one. I did provide some, a little bit of literature, so bear with me. So it's a bit of a two thousand and twenty transition to two thousand and twenty-one. The bullet, first bullet is D C E D C Board and E D worked with developers on a proposed restaurant and mixed-use development project at the former event center on Cockroyle Hill Road. That was a project that was being worked on in two thousand and twenty that bled into twenty, the end of two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-one. The E D C also provided support role in the fire station. As you know, we acquired property on Camp Wisdom Road, and there still is another piece of property that we're trying to acquire in a formal taking. That will be the site of the new fire station, which has been presented to you by the Public Works Director. So that's part of that project that was being completed at the end of two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-one. The field house, that was phase two of the field house, which provided for the outdoor patio area, that was to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. We're nearing completion of that project, and it should be done significantly, or should be done well in advance of the end of two thousand and twenty-one. So that is ongoing. The tax office, as you know, the county tax office was acquired. The E D C facilitated that grant, granting of the property and building to the City of Duncanville. That has been completed. All of those projects were part of the efforts and supportive role that the E D C provided to the City of Duncanville at the end of two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-one. As you're aware, the E D C director resigned in December of two thousand and twenty, provided some contract work into January of two thousand and twenty-one. But approximately four months, the economic development coordinator continued to provide a supportive role to the assistant city manager, who temporarily took on many of the ongoing projects and initiatives. That was the interim city manager at the time. This was prior to the permanent city manager came on board. The economic development director, myself, came on in April of two thousand and twenty-one. I've been here approximately two months. My hire date was April fifteenth, so we're now in June of twenty, June fifteenth, so it's been approximately two months. This is my two-month anniversary. During that time, it's been in orientation, updates to the community enhancement plan, and a number of things I've worked on in that time. Gathering information, providing forms and applications, meeting with applicants for hot tax applications, potential issues with existing shopping center S U Ps and new developments, discussions with state associations, updating, preparing reports for council and board, touring city with my board, conducting my board meetings, preparing agendas, supporting documents, and writing a list, visiting with developer staff meetings, reviewing budget modifications, attending continuing education training, recertification, training on the file management system that we have, this extensive system, SharePoint, as you're aware, and identifying prior files and learning on both our SharePoint, as well as working on the budget for the new year on some of budget initiatives. The D C E D C transition, being, working on, working on the budget and the community enhancement plan, and some of those initiatives have taken place. In addition to that, the E D C director, along with the city manager, I have had an opportunity to meet with multiple projects and opportunities based on those initiatives by this council and by the board. I've had an opportunity to meet with a number of developers within the community, read both locally and regionally. As you know, the E D C development strategy or the continuing or the comprehensive economic plan, or development plan enhancement plan, I should call it, had a number of properties in it. Some of those properties were the old Toyota property, was the LAD property, was several other properties that we own across the city. As you may be aware or recall, I did provide a number, a report with a number of properties within the City of Duncanville. Some of those properties are ideal for development, and I've had an opportunity to meet with multiple developers, along with the city manager, on potential projects or initiatives that the board has tasked the E D C with, as long, as well as the city council. As you're aware, the community enhancement plan has been approved by this council, so we're following that guideline, if you will, along with the comprehensive plan on new development. We've met with developers on the Toyota property, as identified in the presentation, the LAD property. We've also met with a developer on a possible sports tourism initiative with the Duncanville Field House, and I've met with retail developers as well as a retail brokerage firm, very large retail brokerage firm, on some of the issues and some of the strengths of our community. I've had an opportunity to look at the strengths and weaknesses of our community and look at all of the analytics and all of statistics and comprehensive demographic data for the City of Duncanville and what strategy we can provide for attracting development and attracting equity and investment into our community. So a lot of my time in the last two months has been acquiring some of that data, as you, so you recall, the comprehensive property analysis, and working with the city manager as directed by this council on what are the best and highest uses, or the highest and best uses for those properties. We continue to work on, on a long-term development equity attraction strategy through data analysis and market strategy programs, which shall be presented on a two thousand and twenty-two budget workshop, as you're aware, on Monday, the twenty-first. This particular presentation was much more comprehensive. It has been cut down because we're having that economic development presentation before this council, which will be much longer in scope, and I'm sure the audience can appreciate not spending a significant amount of time discussing some of those strategies. Those strategies will also be in the budget presentation with this council on some of the ideas and strategies based on what I just discussed with you, on what we can, should, and possibly could do as an organization to attract equity into the City of Duncanville and new development, based on the conversations I've had with developers, along with the city manager, and some of our departments, as instructed by this council to do. and some of our departments as instructed by this council to do. Um, the E D C, as part of this transition, shall continue to engage aggressively as it transitions from the budget, marketing analysis, and hiring process and onboarding of existing and new staff. Onboarding means myself, as you are aware, my coordinator resigned and went to another community. Uh, I do have an affirmative, uh, response from a new candidate that will become my number two, if you will, in the Economic Development Corporation. Uh, and that will be part of this new transition and learning the system, and I will obviously, uh, transition them as well. I think we're on track, recovery from COVID nineteen, as you know, we went through a hundred-year pandemic. E D C is pursuing, pursuing several opportunities, as I mentioned, for development and continues to support existing projects and report to the board and council, some of those projects are ongoing, like the, uh, the county appraisal office or tax office, as well as the fire station property, uh, and some other buildings that we own. Some of the indicators or a part of the economic matrix that we'll be presenting before you on the twenty-first as part of that budget, uh, is the top players in our diversification, uh, employment, unemployment, age of our workforce, educational attainment of our workforce, the white-collar and blue-collar, uh, workers, household incomes, the tapestry, meaning all the buckets we satisfy as part of our analysis, our sales tax performance and the state of real estate, as well as our resiliency. Resiliency being our aging population, our population that lives below the poverty line, the amount of deposits within our banks, uh, and basically the health and the wealth of our community and what we can offer new developers or attracting equity to this community. Uh, our top ten employers, uh, this is probably, this slide is no stranger to you, I'm sure you've seen some of these employers before. Of note is the last item, there is a new employer that's estimated to be about a hundred and twenty employees. So, this is part of our, the health of our community as far as the diversification of the number of employers and who they employ in this community. These are some of the things that we'll also be looking at. Uh, as part of the quarterly report, I wanted to address sales tax performance. Now, this is a snapshot of the last year and, and seven months, or six months. As you can see, in fiscal year two thousand and twenty, the city as a whole had approximately ten point three million in sales tax allocation from the state, this is citywide. To date, uh, we're at about an eight, nine point nine percent performance increase on sales tax performance. As you can see, there will, in May, there's about a thirty-six point eight percent increase from year over year. There was an audit and approximately a hundred and twenty-three thousand additional sales tax that was allocated to us as part of a recapture. Uh, so that's a bit of an anomaly and not really truly indicative of the performance for that particular month. But in June, we had a thirty-eight point nine one percent, and there was no anomaly that we've identified to date. Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
Is, is there a particular segment of the industry that's driving this increase, or is it across the board?
There are sev, there, there's several segments, and as part of the comprehensive economic report that I'm going to be providing on Monday, I'm going to have broken those down, uh, kind of like I did with your property report, but it is going to take some time, but you'll have all of the detail provided for you, uh, which will give you the specific areas that we've had some increases and decreases as far as sales tax is concerned.
No, Mr. Garcia, our, we have been educated that sales tax dollars are reported to us two months in arrears, so how do you come up with June?
Uh, the report for June is, you're absolutely right, there's sixty days in arrears. So, those would actually be the April report, but these are the allocation that's provided by the State Comptroller's Office.
Oh, from the State Comptroller?
Yes, sir, if you see the source below, it says State Comptroller's Office and H C O Company, which is a report that we subscribe to. So, I provided those numbers based on those reports.
Okay.
So, this is the D C E D C half-cent collection, these are directly derived from those numbers you just saw, from the city snapshot. So, it just gives you, uh, the amount of revenues that the E D C has received. Approximately in twenty, fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we were at two point five eight four million, and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, we're at two point one zero six three eight six. Now, in that comprehensive report we'll be providing, you will also see twenty nineteen numbers, and we can go as far as you want to see a true comparison, because these numbers are a bit of, uh, one times, if you will, for lack of a better term, because we were in a pandemic. And so, just to normalize, uh, and you'll see in that comprehensive report where you'll see a rolling average of prior years to see where exactly we are. I will report that we're at an increase from twenty nineteen of approximately six point two percent. So, I will give that nugget of information, but we can certainly delve into those numbers on Monday, you'll be able to see. But we, based on twenty nineteen numbers and twenty twenty-one numbers, we're still at a positive year-to-date increase of about six point two percent.
Yeah, I, I think in reality, when we look at this, to create a new baseline for the city, we probably can't do it till two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three, even going back to twenty nineteen because of what occurred.
Right, I wouldn't disagree, I wouldn't disagree.
For future comparisons of pure data.
I wouldn't disagree with that assessment.
You know, it's, it's, the new baseline is going to actually occur, I would think, forget twenty twenty, it's gone. Twenty twenty-one is an anomaly, it's going to be a statistical outlier. So, but for the new baseline, we're really looking at two thousand and twenty-two for whatever would happen.
Thank you very much, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, Mr. Contreras.
On the, uh, back to the, uh, specifically to the LAD property. Hey, Michael, sir.
Oh, okay.
Um, going back to the LAD property, have, uh, there been any, any attempts that you know of, um, by the city, uh, either before or after you got here to reach out to the surrounding communities, uh, neighborhoods to see what.
I'm not aware of any, any surveys or any reports, uh, I do know there was a town hall meeting in two thousand and seventeen as part of the comprehensive plan, uh, and surveys were taken about some of the properties throughout the community, and the LAD property was identified as a potential development for the city. Now, I have spoken to, as part of my transition and acclamation to the city, I've visited with some of you and some of my board, and I've gotten mixed reviews, as I think I've identified that, I've gotten some, well, that's RoboPlats, I'm sorry. I've gotten some mixed views on what would be the highest and best use, I've gotten reports that.
From, from whom?
Members of the community, leaders, council member, uh, some of you, as well as the board.
What about, what about the, the, I mean, what are your thoughts?
Citizens within the community, yes, sir.
Yeah, what are your thoughts about getting it directly from those communities that would be most affected by, um, any kind of development out there?
As a previous developer and as an economic developer, my experience has been until there's an actual plan of what is going to be provided, the community feels a little apprehensive towards change and anything that would be new, that I, I would recommend that we have a potential plan and then look at that and see what, how the community responds. And if you have a town hall meeting or a potential meeting with the community and see how they respond to the actual potential development. Or go out for potential options and see how the community responds and make a decision forthwith.
Well, thank you, that makes sense, thank you.
Mr. Cooks.
Uh, Mr. Garcia, I want to thank you again for the presentation, excellent presentation, uh, since your second delivery of this, so thank you, thanks a lot. You're on the page that I wanted to speak on, and that's page ninety-five, and just one simple question is, when will we change, when can you help us change bullet number three to not, to no longer say former Toyota dealership property and make it something more aggressive for us to look forward to? I know we don't have a name, so I just, maybe you and the, and the board, uh, can, can make some recommendations. But I'm, every time I see that bullet, I'm going to challenge you to say, what else could that name be other than former Toyota dealership property?
The next presentation. It will have a different name, whatever that name is, I don't know, but it will have a different name.
Uh, seeing no other comments from city council, we are adjourned at nine twenty-four, thank you.